Good evening. Calling to order a meeting of the Town of Arlington Select Board. It is April 8th, just a few minutes after 7:15. I'm going to introduce the people that we've got with us. All the way to my right is Selectman John Hurd. Immediately to my right is Selectman Joe Kuro. I'm Selectman Dan Dunn. Immediately to my left is Selectwoman Diane Mahan. And all the way to the left, it is first meeting just sworn in today. Congratulations, Selectman Steve DeCoursey.
Welcome. Do you want to...
Yeah, that'd be great. Thank you. Thank you for the introduction. I want to thank all the voters of Arlington for electing me to Select Board. I want to thank Bob Tozey for running a good campaign. I have a ton of respect for Bob. We spoke over the weekend, and I know he's going to continue to do great things for Arlington. I want to thank all my supporters, and I want to thank my family. And if you'll just indulge me for a minute. My father was a town meeting member from Precinct 16, and my mother was the PTO president at Down when I was a child. They stood up there for several hours on Saturday, so I want to thank them. They're watching at home in Belmont tonight. My sister was out over the weekend, and my three children, two of them were outstanding. My son John was down at Hardy where he went to school, and my son Mark was our young voter coordinator at Arlington High School. And he and a number of his friends voted for the first time in this municipal election, as did Mr. Kuro's daughter Savannah. So I want to thank the younger voters for getting involved. And lastly, my daughter Megan unfortunately couldn't be here. She finished her senior thesis today in college, but she sent a lot of words of encouragement, and she's been a great inspiration for me. And lastly, I want to thank my wife Mary for all her encouragement and support. And I'm really looking forward to serving the town over the next three years and working with you all.
Thanks, Steve. Welcome.
Also with us, we have Town Manager Adam Chapdulane and Town Council Doug Heim, who are struggling with an AV issue.
He's not proposing. Sorry.
And we also have Board Administrator Marie Karpelka. So before I turn over the chairmanship, I have one last quote to start the meeting. It is from President Barack Obama. "The peaceful transition of power is one of the hallmarks of our democracy." Mrs. Karpelka, would you please conduct the organizational meeting?
Okay. The first order of business tonight is to have an organizational meeting to elect a Chair, so I'm going to ask for nominations from all of yous. And I'm going to start with a roll call vote for Mr. Hurd. Do you have a nomination? Do you want to...
For Chair? I'll nominate Selectwoman Diane Mahan. I have second.
I move to close the nominations.
Second.
All in favor?
Oh, roll call.
Roll call. Mr. Hurd?
Yes.
Mr. Kuro?
Yes.
Mr. Dunn?
Yes.
Mrs. Mahan?
Yes.
Mr. DeCoursey?
Yes.
Okay, so now we just...
That was to close the nominations. Now we have to...
So now we're going to take the vote. Okay, this is to elect Mrs. Mahan as the Chair.
Yes.
Mr. Kuro?
Yes.
Mr. Dunn?
Yes.
Mrs. Mahan?
Yes, thank you.
Mr. DeCoursey?
Yes.
Now, hearing all in favor, do I need to have another roll call?
No.
Just, okay, so congratulations, Mrs. Mahan. And now we will go to Vice Chair, and I need nominations. Mr. Kuro?
I nominate Mr. Dunn.
Second. I move to close the nominations.
Second.
Mr. Hurd?
Yes.
Mr. Kuro?
Yes.
Mr. Dunn?
Yes.
Mrs. Mahan?
Yes.
Mr. DeCoursey?
Yes.
All in favor? So now we can just continue...
Now we have to vote on... That was to close. Now we have to vote on him being Vice Chair.
Vice Chair?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Kuro?
Yes.
Mr. Dunn?
Yes.
Mrs. Mahan?
Yes.
Mr. DeCoursey?
Yes.
Congratulations to the...
Now we do the shuffle.
Now we do shuffle.
Do, 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 do. With my phone.
All right. Mm-hmm.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Okay, let me just get this turned the right way. Oh, I forgot to do that. Okay. Thank you to my colleagues for electing me Chair. Something, as we all do, I take very seriously, and it truly is an honor. And I appreciate your faith in me. So on that note, we will go to our second agenda item. God bless you. Presentation by the Arlington High School Building Committee. I will call on our colleague from the school committee, Mr. Thielman.
Thank you, Madam Chair. My name is Jeff Thielman, and I'm here to represent the Arlington High School Building Committee. I'm a member of the school committee and a town meeting member from Precinct 12. We have presented on the high school building project to a number of bodies in town, and this is the last presentation. I think I have one more, but this is the presentation to a body that has authority before a town meeting, so we wanted a chance to go through the details of the project and explain as much as we can to you. If you go to the next, the first slide, I want to kind of just remind people of this process. We began this process about four years ago with a statement of interest submission to the Massachusetts School Building Authority. That's the authority in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, a quasi-public entity that provides funding to cities and towns to build high schools. And what cities and towns do is partner with the MSBA to decide whether or not a new high school is needed, or a new school is needed, and then design that school and then build it. In 2016, we were invited into the eligibility period. In 2016, late 2016, the High School Building Committee was formed. We've been working together for two and a half years and have formed a good group of people that care deeply about this project and about the town. And then in 2018, we finished the schematic design. The schematic design that we chose was accepted by the MSBA, and we are now finishing the schematic design process and about to have a vote by the MSBA on April 10th to move forward. And I'll explain what that means in a minute. I, all of you follow, have followed this issue closely, but if you go to the next slide, I want to just kind of refresh everyone's memory as to why we need a new high school. Enrollment, the high school is nearly at capacity. It will exceed capacity in a few years. We don't have enough room for all the students we have. I like to remind people that when I first joined the school committee in Arlington in 2003, there were 4,300 students in the district. There's now more than 6,000. There are 584 kindergarteners this year in the Arlington Public Schools. That's a lot of kids. Some won't stay with us, but if that trend continues, you can see how crowded our high school will be. The building, every 10 years, schools go through what's called an accreditation process. That's a review of the school by your peers. We get reviewed by the New England Association of Schools and Colleges, and the New England Association of Schools and Colleges put Arlington High School on warning for our facilities. Our facilities were not adequate for a 21st century school, and you talk to any teacher in that building, including the principal, who was here tonight, and they will reinforce that position. And much of the building, if you walk through the building, we're having tours again for town meeting members. You're all town meeting members. You're welcome to come tomorrow night at 7 o'clock at the high school. Much of the building is in need of serious repair. On the next slide, all of you have been involved in town life for a long time. Some of you were born here, and you know the history of this building. There are a lot of people, however, who are new to the community, who don't quite realize that it's a collection of buildings built over a 60- or 70-year period, or more than that. The first building was built in 1914. An addition was put in 1938 that was originally an auditorium. Additions were then put in in 1960 and 1961. In 1975, the voters, a proposal was put forth to build a brand-new high school that was defeated. The town then spent more money putting on additions in 1980. And so that building is a collection of spaces that accommodate our high school, the Lab Collaborative, which is a program to help special education students from all surrounding towns, our adult, our community education program, our preschool, our monotony preschool, which required to have by law, and in some town offices, which will be moving out of that facility. So this school is a very complex, inefficient use of space. Those of you who grew up here, those of you who spent a lot of time in Arlington are familiar with it, but I will tell you that newcomers to the town who see this for the first time are amazed at this kind of history of the construction, and that helps them to understand why we need a new high school. Our last renovation was done 38 years ago by contract with the MSBA. We're required to look at different sites in the town of Arlington. We couldn't find another site in the town of Arlington. No surprise there. We were required to explain to the state, this is the largest parcel we could find. The ideal target is a 25-acre property. This is about 22 and a half acres. If you go to the next slide, you'll get a sense of, I want to kind of summarize the decision that we made. We went through a complicated process, listening to people in the community, listening to our architect, listening to hundreds of people, literally thousands of people completed surveys, came to meetings, and we decided to opt for a new school, a brand-new school. The MSBA requires you to look at three options. A renovation of the entire facility, that was not feasible because of our increasing enrollment. School is not big enough, the physical plan is not big enough, to completely renovate it. Wasn't a cost-effective option. Then we look at the possibility of a renovation addition. A renovation addition would have cost $25 million more than the next option, and would have cost more money because you have to go two years without an auditorium, two years without a gym, you're paying for modular classrooms, and it's actually a less, it's a more constrained process to build a renovation addition. It's also less likely to get the school to net zero, and it constrained what we could do in terms of the design of the building. So we opted for a brand-new school, which minimizes disruption to the school, allows for faster construction, and allows our young people to be in a new, or in parts of a new school by the, by this, by January of 2022. We are very excited about the possibilities inside this new school. And our principal, Matt Janger, is going to speak to what this means. John Cole, an architect, is here. Ryan Kotowski, who's an expert on sustainability, is here, and the town manager is here as well, and Dr. Bodie and Amy Spear from the School Building Committee are here to answer questions you might have. We are meeting with various bodies in the town of Arlington. If you go to the next slide, Doug, to gather feedback to date, we have received unanimous support for the project from the Finance Committee, the School Committee, the Capital Planning Committee, the Permanent Town Building Committee, the Clean Energy Future Committee, and Sustainable Arlington. And we're proud of our track record so far. The next step is a presentation to town meeting on April 29th. Next step is a vote of the MSBA to approve the project. So the MSBA vote on April 10th gives us the language for the warrant article and gives us the language we have to put before town meeting on April 29th. April 29th, we'll do a presentation, we'll answer questions from town meeting members, and then we'll take a vote. Prior to town meeting, I must message, I want to get to anybody in town. There's a tour of the high school tomorrow night at 7 o'clock. You're all welcome to come and see it. Any town meeting members, anybody in town with questions about the project, you can email the Arlington High School Building Committee website, and we'll get right back to you with an answer. You get on the website, there's detailed information. We want to make sure that prior to town meeting, people have all the information they need. We're finishing a booklet, about a 30-page presentation that'll go to town meeting by the end of this week. So I'm going to turn it over to our principal. Everything you do when you design a school with the MSBA, or anywhere else for that matter, is a derivative of an educational plan. So the most important thing that architects and a building committee take into account aren't what happens outside the building, it's actually what happens inside the building. And the design of the building comes from the inside. It comes from what's going to happen inside the building educationally. And our principal began a process about five years ago, more than five years ago now, with our teachers to talk about what the new school should look like, and per the MSBA standards, came up with an educational vision, and he's going to share that with you now.
Thank you very much for having us. So as Mr. Thielman said, we began about five years ago, when I first came here, actually, six years ago, the, it became pretty clear that the building was really straining to hold the students that we had at the time. At the time, we had about 1,200 students. We're up to 1,380. We're on our way up to a building that will be 1,755 by the time this new building opens, and that's the build size for the program. So straining under that, we were straining both to deliver the instruction that we wanted and to be able to do the things we needed to do. And we knew that this decision was, we had some time to think about it, and the decision would move quickly when we came along. So five years ago, faculty started going out and looking at other schools and other programs to look at not just how we're teaching now and how we are constrained, but how we want it to be teaching in the future and what the facility would need to look like. And what we really wanted, and this is sort of an overview going forward, was a building, two things that really emerged. We wanted a building that was flexible. A lot of the time when I would, you'd look around the building, you'd look at schools, people would have put in bricks and mortar the fad de jour, something that they liked to do today, and they didn't want to do it anymore. So they were building walls in places where they didn't used to be. So we wanted a good building, one that would take what we were doing now and support it, take what we wanted to do going forward and support it, but also be flexible for lots of purposes. And secondly, we wanted a building that was balanced. We wanted a building that would serve the needs of the whole child and all children. And one of the things that I'm most proud of, when you look at a lot of the schools we've studied, is the way in which every community, every part, and every function is really balanced. It's not like it's fabulous in one direction but mediocre in another. It's good and appropriate and all the things that we want to look at. So if you look over here on the right, that little sketch is something the architects apparently call a partie. It's just a rough sketch of the layout of the building, and it gives you an idea of sort of the basic philosophy of the building. In Arlington, right now, we are an extraordinarily strong school. We rank ninth in the state of Massachusetts. Massachusetts, if it was a country, would be one of the top-performing countries in the world. So this is actually one of the best public school systems in the world. And so given that, we have a very strong departmental structure. We don't want to throw that out the window. So the building is designed to support those departments. So if you look over on the right, you see the two main academic wings. There's the steam wing, science, technology, engineering, arts, and math. Everybody wants to be near everybody for interpersonal, for interdisciplinary purposes, but we tried to put the things that were logically close closer together. And then the humanities wing, which has family and consumer science on the first floor, as well as a lot of administrative and support functions, then it's English, world language, and history. So those are the two academic wings. On the left-hand side, we have the performing arts wing, which is a theater, music, band program, and then the athletics wing. But what I'm most excited about is the way in which they thought about the center of the building. The center of this building is what people refer to as the spine, what I like to call the central learning commons. The learning commons includes the library, the sort of central main street hallway, the cafeteria area, which is a mixed-use area for students to gather in, and then around that are all the support functions and all the interdisciplinary functions. And the idea is that when students are off on the side in the humanities wing and the steam wing, they're there for academic purposes, or they're there in their house neighborhoods. That's where that activity takes part. But when they come into the middle, that's when they're doing interdisciplinary work, that's when they're getting support work. What that creates is a building that is welcoming, it's easily supervised, students have a lot of freedom of movement, but unlike our current building with its mile and a half of hallways and its 25 stairwells, they're not wandering sort of all down into little corners. When they're in the middle, they don't feel supervised because they can flow in, they can find places to be, but they are easily supervised and kept safe. So just, you can go, so that's what, that's sort of the general idea of the look. The idea here, when we looked at the vision, was that people wanted a school that fit with the town. One version was to keep the current facade, but we found, as Jeff pointed out, that that was going to be cost prohibitive and very disruptive to the educational program. So we've moved into, said, to this look, which is reminiscent of the current look with columns and a kind of a traditional New England collegiate or New England school feel, but newer and ready to be functioning. If you go to the next slide, you can talk about those things. So as we said before, we have the traditional look and feel, we have that central spine with its wings. And then if you go to the next slide, you'll see what is one of the big advantages of this current move, which is the move forward. So if you look right now at that front wing, the back of that front wing is the front of the current building. So that enables us to build on the front of the building the new steam wing and the new performing arts wing without disrupting activity within the building. It also moves the whole building forward about 80 feet. So if you look at the edge of that parking lot in the back, that's running through the middle of what is now the Downs House building and the gym. The result of that is we get more usable green space. Right now, the lawn is a nice setback. It's about half parking lot, and the rest of it is right up on Massachusetts Avenue. So while the classes sometimes go out there, it's not a secure space, it's not a quiet space, it's not a space that kids can make a lot of use of. By moving forward, we are able to program the courtyard space on the right and program the amphitheater space on the left, as well as creating in the back a set of competition fields. So right now, behind the building, we have a competition softball field, but we do not have a competition baseball field. So by turfing that space in the back, we'll have a varsity competition baseball field, a varsity competition softball field, as well as, if you see overlaid on the turf, those are both competition soccer, lacrosse playing fields. The idea being that with lights and all of that space, we can potentially run three varsity sports at the same time in the afternoon and the evening. That allows us to coordinate, and also, we know that there's a shortage of fields around the town, so that actually pulls our high school impact off of all of those other spaces. So if you flip to the next slide, this moves us back inside the building, and this is a cross-cut through what we're calling the central spine of the learning commons. So the idea is there's two main entrances. Now, right now in the building, about half the folks come in in the morning in the back, and about half come in through the front, or the mass av and the field entrances. But they come in through 33 entrances and 55 doors. In this design, they will be coming in through two main entrances and really nothing else. The only people coming into the main high school will be people who are there for educational purposes. The other purposes in the building will be accessed separately. So if you look through that space, you come into the main theater, I mean into the main hallway. The theater program is on the left, the academic wings are on the right. You pass the black box theater, which I should have mentioned before. We found that when you move the black box theater to the end of the courtyard space, that created a natural theater. So the amphitheater is something that we can actually use spring, fall, and then all summer long for other purposes as an outdoor theater program. That flows down into the cafeteria space or up into the library, and then connected to the library above, we have support functions like the Smart Lab and the Discourse Lab, which are interdisciplinary gathering spaces. I think that's my last slide. Is that my last one? John, did you want to say something?
I think he's talking.
John usually says it with the enthusiasm of an architect, as opposed to the enthusiasm of an educator. But I do want to go back to one thing that Jeff said. So we wrote an extraordinarily detailed educational program and vision for the school. That came out of five years of work on the part of faculty. It came out of a visioning session by 60 members of the community, representing students, teachers, outside experts, as well as community members. And we went through every single space and every single function. And what excites me about this building is that every inch of this building is written into that program, and every piece of that program is represented by the bricks and mortar that we're putting in place. At the same time, what excites me about that building is I can see about 100 different ways, when someone has a new innovative idea, they can shift things around and still use it. Thank you very much.
Mr. Chapdulane?
Evidence of my height there. I'm not sure if I've ever spoken to the board from this microphone before. So I'm going to...
Get directly into it, please.
I'm going to speak to the cost factors that we've been working on on the project. So sort of high level, this first slide talks about, as it says, the big picture. What we certainly knew and we've learned through this process is high schools are costly to build. They have a lot of specialized spaces, a lot of large-volume spaces, as you saw through that cut-through, lots of large volumes to heat, cool, build, so obviously quite expensive for us to build. We're also looking at this project in the middle of what is a continuing incredible real estate boom in the greater Boston area. So I say at committee meetings, or whenever I'm talking to people in the public, just count the cranes on the skyline, and it can give you a sense of how expensive it's going to be to build something. And there's a lot of cranes on the skyline. A lot happening in Boston. We've seen historically through our OPM Skanska that there's been a 4% a year escalation in construction costs, and there doesn't seem to be an end in sight with current market conditions. Specific to the high school, as both Jeff and Matt mentioned, we've seen tremendous enrollment growth. We're growing from the school we have now with somewhat 1,400 students. We're expecting 1,755 and beyond in future years, so we need the square footage to be able to, to be able to house those students. The high school's not a typical high school. It's a high-performing high school, and the committee made the decisions to invest very strategically in the performing arts space, into the athletics space, into the humanities space, and the steam space, within MSBA guidelines, but maxing out those MSBA guidelines so that we were building the school that the community wants for, to achieve the levels that it's been achieving in the past. We also all know it's a very complex site. There's about a 30-foot grade difference from the front of the site to the back of the site. It's allowed the architectural team to do some interesting things with the building, but it's a construction challenge. We have to phase the project so that we'll build up front, and then we'll move into the occupied building and continue to phase students around, so that creates complications and a longer schedule. And I think, as the board is familiar, there's contamination in many parts of the site from prior uses. So it does, it allows us to go forward with the project, but there's both cost and phasing and just construction preparation that has to go into managing that contamination. And then finally, unlike a lot of other schools, we have additional spaces in there that not every high school has. We have the Lab Collaborative, we have the monotony preschool, we have community education, we have district administration, we have town and school payroll. Quick comparison, we have about 29,000 square feet of non-direct high school space, whereas Belmont High, as planned, has about 12,000. So Belmont has all those uses somewhere else in their town, but they're not in their high school. We have it in our high school. They have to be in our town. We looked at other alternatives for where we could place them, couldn't find any more cost-effective alternatives in town, and that's why they're part of the high school. Go to the next slide, Doug. So to talk about our efforts to control the cost, we, as a committee, feel like the first thing we did to control cost was right out of the gate, choose the option for the all-new facility. By not choosing the reno addition, option one, we saved about $25 million. We got down to what at that time was a $308 million project cost. So we feel like right from the start, we were thinking about how we can control the costs of this project. Moving on from there, we made decisions to move the comptroller's office to Town Hall and facilities in IT to what will be the newly renovated DPW building. So based on square footage estimates, that saved about $5 to $8 million off this project cost. Then, once we received our final set of cost estimates during the schematic phase, the committee voted to reduce project scope by $7.6 million to get us down to the $290 million figure we're at now. Again, trying to remain very cost-conscious throughout the process. And then outside of reducing cost, we've also been very focused on making sure we're going to maximize our reimbursement rate from the MSBA. So by submitting our proactive building maintenance budget to the MSBA, you could receive somewhere between one and two points. I believe we're receiving 1.61 points for that, so a high amount of those points. We're designing, as Ryan will talk about, a very energy-efficient building, so we should be receiving the two percentage point reimbursement points for designing in that fashion, and we have voted to go with a construction manager-at-risk approach to get another point, which all added up will bring our reimbursement rate to 49.72%. And then finally, Ryan will also talk a little bit about this. We have partnered with the, our utilities to be part of the Accelerate Performance Partnership, which is guaranteeing a minimum of floor of $200,000 in energy rebates before we even begin the planning process. We assume that we will receive much, much more than that as we move forward, but he'll talk in more detail about that. Next slide, Doug. So when we go to the MSBA on Wednesday, we're hoping they approve what will be a project total of 298, 290.8 million dollars. We estimate that our share will be, as you see there, 204.8, and that the MSBA share will be 86 million. Important to mention, I said our reimbursement rate is 49.72. That clearly is not 49.72 split. There are some things, or frankly, many things, that are either capped or not reimbursable that are part of this project, so there's both our reimbursement rate and our effective So there's both our reimbursement rate and our effective reimbursement rate. Ultimately, when the whole project is put together and viewed through the MSBA lens, our effective reimbursement rate is just about thirty percent. So that's why you see the two-oh-four to the eighty-six. Again, the MSBA will finalize what we believe to be these numbers on Wednesday at their meeting. Obviously, as Jeff mentioned, this is a partnership with them. They have a significant financial stake in this project, but they also have a very strict process that makes sure that we are going to follow all of their rules, good construction practices, good construction management practices. So they're really a partner throughout all of this. Important to mention that, once they take that vote, no matter what happens, the MSBA share is not going to go up. It's going to be capped at that eighty-six-million-dollar figure. And once, assuming Town Meeting appropriates the money and there is a successful debt exclusion, the town share can't go up without further voter approval. There can't just be automatic increases to this project budget. And the committee's also committed throughout the process to seeing where there can be value engineering as we get into design development, the real detailed aspect of design, as well as the production of construction documents. If we see aspects of the plan are becoming more costly than what we expected at this stage in the process, we can make decisions to reduce that. If we see, again, other options for saving costs, we will look at that as the process goes forward. And then the final slide I'll speak to is the benchmark analysis that we've put together to compare ourselves to a few other projects in the region, just to sort of get a sense of whether or not we're in the ballpark from a cost point of view with some other projects. So what we did was that, at the top, you see what the project cost was at the time it was approved, or at least as far as we know now for both our project and the Waltham project. We then, down in the second row, escalated to our timeline. So using that four percent construction escalation index that I mentioned in a prior slide, those projects that are ahead of us, Belmont, Saugus, and Somerville, we escalated them as though they were being built in the same timeline as us. So then with that escalated cost, we look at construction cost per square foot. And you see, we don't actually have that number for Waltham yet, but we compare quite favorably, we're in the same ballpark as Belmont, Saugus, and Somerville. We then take our design enrollment and divide that by the escalated cost to get a project cost per pupil. And once again, you can see, we compare favorably to Waltham, a little bit higher than Belmont, obviously somewhat higher than Saugus, but also compare quite favorably to Somerville. Every one of these projects is different. They're not the same as Arlington, Arlington's not the same as them, but we do feel that this demonstrates that we're not spending, though two-hundred-and-ninety-one million dollars is a lot of money, we're not spending exorbitantly or way out of line with what comparable projects in the region are spending. So with that, I think we're going to go to Ryan to talk about sustainability.
Good evening. I'm Ryan Katsoski. I'm one of the community representatives on the building committee and I'm the chair of the Sustainability MEP Subcommittee. MEP stands for mechanical electrical plumbing. And there's a very close connection between sustainability and all those systems, so that's why we've put those together. So our goal on the sustainability front was to really make that part of our deliberations from the beginning of the project. The earlier that you can think about these things, the more successful you're going to be and the more you're going to be able to manage any costs associated with the choices you make. You make those things part of all the trade-offs that we've been making throughout the project. So that's been our goal. We've been working towards that and I'll talk a little bit about where that's taken us in our design so far. So the first thing that we want to do is design a building that is very energy-efficient, that we're passive, the design of the building is the less energy you need to consume. If there's any disruptions in energy supply, the building is better at maintaining its comfort for longer. The current high school, so the key metric is something called energy use intensity, EUI. It's measured in thousands of BTUs per square foot per year. The current building is around sixty-six by that metric. Our preliminary energy modeling for the new building is thirty-three. So we're going to use about half the site energy. I actually think we can drive that down a little further as we refine the design and do some more analysis. Another goal that we set for ourselves was to make this building a carbon-neutral building, certainly over time. And one of the key ways to doing that is baking the building all electric. So the building itself is not consuming any fossil fuels and you make choices around the design of the mechanical systems that allow you to run the building entirely on electricity. It also actually results in a really efficient design because the technologies for doing that tend to be pretty efficient. The key technology for doing that is what's called ground source heat pumps. So I don't know if you're familiar with how heat pumps work. They're basically, they're air conditions that you can run backwards, so you can run them for cooling in the summer and heating in the winter. And ground source heat pumps is an application of this technology that results in very, very efficient energy use. We're also going to have photovoltaics on the building and actually, if all goes according to plan, we'll have some photovoltaics over some of the parking as well with canopies. And the goal here is to generate as much electricity as we can to offset the energy that we're going to use in the building. We currently have solar on the building today. Our plan is to relocate those panels to the buildings that will be built in the first phase of the project, that's the steam wing and the performing arts wing. And then we'll have additional space on the building to add additional solar generation. As Adam mentioned, we're part of this Accelerate Performance Program. This is a pilot program with our utilities. The idea behind that program is to start thinking about energy use early in the project so that you can achieve your goals with little or no incremental cost. So we've set ourselves energy use intensity targets with that program. The targets we set for ourselves was between thirty and forty on that metric, a thousand BTUs per square foot per year. I mentioned we're currently modeling at thirty-three, so we're actually pretty close to achieving our goal there. And this program gives us some free technical support, so the utilities provide a consultant at no cost to the town. They provide some incentives for the design team as well. They're going to help us sponsor a charrette, a design charrette around sustainability in the next phase of the project. And so it's really helping us work through all the problems that we wanted to work through anyway. And they've been a really helpful partner so far. The last thing I'll mention, actually second to last, is that we've done a fair bit of design on this to date. The next phase of the project, we're really rolling up our sleeves and getting into the details. We're going to conduct what's known as a lifecycle cost analysis. So we know what we want to achieve with the building and the question is, you know, what is the best use of our resources? Should we be spending more on making the building more efficient or purchasing this type of equipment? And there are trade-offs to be made and the goal here is to get an optimal mix so that we can have the lowest lifecycle cost possible. The last thing I'll mention, which is not on the slide, is beyond the energy use of the building. We're also thinking about a lot of other sustainability features. We're going to have direct access to the Minuteman bike path. We're going to have improved, much improved bicycle parking. It's a much more pedestrian-friendly site. There's a lot of daylight in the building. We're actually have light wells in the design that's going to bring daylight down into the classroom wings. We're planning to recover as much of the construction and demolition debris as we can throughout the process. And there's a bunch of other things that we're doing on the sustainability front that will hopefully overall make this a really comfortable, wonderful space to be in, gusundite. And I'll stop there and turn it back over to Jeff.
Thank you, everyone. If you go to the next slide, just kind of give you an overview of the construction timeline. If the three things happen, the MSBA vote on Wednesday is favorable, which we expect. Town Meeting votes by two-thirds to endorse the project with the language and the warrant approved by the Board of, by the state. And there's a favorable vote of the voters on June eleventh. Then we begin what's called the design development stage. That would happen later in the month of June. We're in the process right now of getting permission from the state to select the construction manager at risk. We would hope to do that right after the June eleventh vote. And then we begin the design development process. That's when we refine the design, we finalize the timetable for the project, we finalize all sorts of different phases of the project. We would begin construction in July of 2020. We would, eighteen months later, we would open up the new performing arts wing and steam wings and then we would begin construction of the lobby cafeteria and library. And then fourteen months after that, we would have students in the new school except for the gymnasium. We'd be beginning the gymnasium. And then fourteen months after that, we would begin the, we would finish the site work, the construction outside of the building. So this is a project where we've engaged deeply, I think, with people in the community. And it's also important, I think, for the select board and the town to know that throughout this entire process, the MSBA checks every single one of our numbers. We can't get far in the MSBA process unless we're spending a comparable amount of money to other districts. They're not going to let Arlington do something exorbitant. It just doesn't, it just doesn't work that way. The other point I want to make is I always like to remind ourselves that we stand on the shoulders of giants who have led this building project, building project effort in the town of Arlington. The late Bill Shea, who I served with on the permanent town building committee, great fiery guy, passionate about everything we do in town, led the effort to build all of our elementary schools. Charlie Foskett has been a supporter of this project, the high school project, was a supporter of all of our school building projects. And John Cole, who was here, who didn't get to speak, but John Cole has been involved in all of the school building projects from the beginning. And we've been guided a lot on the committee by John's wisdom, his experience, the depth of his knowledge, both of construction, of school building projects, and architectural knowledge. So we stand on the shoulders of giants. Arlington has a great history of supporting schools and supporting its kids and we have a chance to do that on the twenty-ninth of April with the Town Meeting vote and on the eleventh of June. I'll stop there and I'll take your questions, or we'll take your questions.
Just for procedurally first, I'd like to entertain a motion.
I move support, Board of Selectmen's hearty endorsement and support of building the new high school.
Motion by Mr. Dunn, seconded by Mr. Hurd. Any question, comments from my colleagues? Mr. Kuro?
I can't thank you all enough. I know this has been just a Herculean effort to balance the educational vision with a fiscally responsible program with a lot of competing demands from the public and from a lot of other stakeholders. And it's just, it's a monumental task and I think we just really can't thank you all and the building committee and everyone else who's been involved in the process enough for this. I've gone to some of the forums and I've seen how much energy and such, as well as your website and the other communications efforts, so thank you. I think you know this is very personal to, like every one of us up here has friends and family who are current, former, future Arlington High School students. We have two alumni right here on the board.
Class eight.
AHS. Eighty-two. And, you know, Mr. DeCoursey mentioned at the beginning of the meeting that there were a lot of AHS students who were out this past Saturday and, you know, sorry to burst your bubble, I know a lot of people were out there for their candidates, but I also know personally from talking to them that a lot of them were our high school students who were out there, A, because Arlington High School produces really civically engaged kids, and B, because they understand the problems in this school, they want to make sure that something better is left behind. I'll just give you an anecdote. My younger daughter accompanied some of our Nago Kakio exchange students around the high school. The kids were really nice, they were polite. It killed me when she told me that they could not hide their shock, though, when they saw pieces of ceiling missing and some of the conditions of the building. They just weren't able to hide the reaction when they were walking around. And for our kids, I mean, it's not just a matter of pride, we just, we have to do this and so I am so happy that we're getting ready to gear up for this. You all know that we're going to discuss later tonight the debt exclusion. So I just have three questions I wanted to put out based on the presentation. The first is, I guess through you, Madam Chair, to the manager. I know, I'm glad you mentioned this, Mr. Chapdeline, you stressed this idea that the MSBA share cannot be increased, Arlington's share cannot increase without voter approval. This was something that actually came up at Candidates Night last week. This question was asked about what happens if there's a cost overrun. So could you just explain that, the piece about Arlington's share? Is that only excluded debt that would have to go back to the voters or any increase in Arlington's share on this project would have to go back to the voters?
So I guess the, if I may, Madam Chair, the first thing I would say is, we are budgeting and planning contingencies right now to do all that we can to avoid any type of cost overrun. I think it's important to say that we're not expecting cost overruns.
Yeah.
You know, that we are putting together a budget that is trying to buffer against that. If it was, if there was something that was large-scale requiring a debt exclusion, it would have to go to the voters. If it was something smaller, it would need a further appropriation from Town Meeting, you know, included within the proposition two-and-a-half levy.
Okay, okay, great, thank you. My second question, I'm very impressed with all the sustainability efforts that are going into the building. And it just, it strikes me that there are a lot of learning opportunities there and I was wondering if it's envisioned that there are going to be, there is going to be some way to incorporate that with some of the steam education.
So we have talked about that. We haven't gotten too far into the details. Boiler room tours are a possibility, but we've been talking about trying to maybe expose some of the mechanical systems so that students can see them. And I think there'll be other opportunities. We're going to have, we're going to have, you know, photovoltaics. Right now, the photovoltaics on the school are invisible, but with the new school, there'll be opportunities to get a little bit up close and personal with some of it, so I think there'll be some opportunities there. We're also planning to, we're also planning to install some electric vehicle charging stations in the parking lots, so I can see us perhaps doing some things around that as well. But yeah, there's definitely plans to incorporate the building into the curriculum to the extent we can.
Fantastic, excellent.
So one, just to reiterate what Dan said, the, Ryan, sorry. Building as teacher, building as educator is part of the philosophy of the building, so there'll be a lot of effort throughout the building to explain why things are the way they are and how they work. There are actually, Skanska and HMFH have both already agreed to have interns, so we'll be having students working with them throughout the project. And there are actually students already involved on the sustainability committee as well as on the building committee.
Great, thank you. And then my last question is, one thing I'm very impressed with is that you've been able to put together a plan that will not require modulars and will not only minimize cost but minimize disruption to the students and staff, the way that you phased in the project. So I'm wondering, what are, I know you won't really have a sense of this until construction managers on hand, but what are the types of wild cards that you potentially worry about that could disrupt the schedule? Types, I know, you don't know what you don't know.
John, actually, John.
Yeah, yeah, this seemed like a John question.
The architect, that's the solution.
Sure.
There are three major risks that this project faces. Risk number one is escalation. Given the intensity of the construction market in Boston, if that continues, the escalation numbers may rise. We're currently carrying four percent in our budget through the midpoint of construction. The second major risk is contamination of the soil. We have done extensive borings, drilling down into the earth prior to putting together the plant, so we know where the bulk of the contaminated material is and we have costs for what it takes to remove it and safely dispose of it off-site. That's about five-hundred-and-seventy-five-thousand dollars currently in the budget. Lastly, we have the contamination within the building, asbestos everywhere, and other things behind walls. We're carrying over four million dollars in our budget to deal with those materials, but we won't know until we start taking the buildings down. The contingencies, I think I should mention what we've set aside. We're currently carrying an eight percent design and pricing contingency that will take us through the next phase as we refine the design. We can adjust where we have to. We have a three percent construction contingency once we start building and a one percent owner's contingency at this point. That's a total of twelve percent, over twenty-three-and-a-half million dollars. So we know their risk, we believe we've mitigated them.
So those are cost risks, but I was also asking about timeline risks.
Well, one of the benefits of having a construction manager at risk is that we can deal with those type of issues in real time. With the traditional procurement method is a lot more difficult.
Great, thank you very much. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Mr. Kuro?
One question, just a couple of comments. What's a smart lab?
The smart, the D R?
Smart lab?
The discourse lab?
Smart lab.
The smart lab. No, you can take that.
I figured I'd throw you an easy one.
Yeah, so actually throughout the building, there are a lot of different, what we call maker spaces, right? So there's a lot of different uses of technology and so one of the things we did was in each department, there are specialized technology spaces, although they may be used interdisciplinarily. The smart lab in particular is essentially a clean maker space, so it's off the library, so it's where people can do high-end production. Right now, we have in the library a laminator, a vinyl cutter, a laser cutter, a three-D printer, so it would be all of those facilities in a space that's designed for it and supervised.
Well, it's exciting because I did volunteer for my son's art class at Dallin and he showed me how to use the three-D printers. I'm excited to see more of that.
Expect to be run by kids.
I think he can. I don't have many questions because I want to congratulate the people that have worked on this project for all the time that you've put in. The process has been so in-depth, the amount of public forums and informational sessions that have been available to residents has been just amazing. And I'm sure all of your families are glad to get you guys through this step of the process because I know it's been a lot of time that you guys have devoted to this and I'm excited about the project. I think we've got a great design that reflects what the public input has been and we'll go to the next step.
Thank you, Mr. Hurd.
Just along those lines of what John said, that building the school, I have been really very happy and very... very happy and very thankful for the Building Committee, because, you know, people ask me questions about, you know, why are we doing this, or why are we doing that, or what's the choice here? And I said, "Well, what you do is you put a bunch of really smart people who know their respective domains about education and building and town finance, and you put them, and you tell them to talk, to run a process. And then, when it comes out, you're going to be happy with the result." And that is exactly what has happened here, and I'm really happy.
Mr. DeCoursey?
Oh, thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to commend the committee as well. You've been at it for three years, and you've done an outstanding job. And as someone who was at the high school during the last renovation, I know what we went through there and what we got, and how desperately we need a new building. So, I appreciate all your efforts. One of the things I want to ask you about, and as you look at the diagram that's up there right now, the cutout of the central spine, there are different levels. And as you know, right now, there's so much difficulty at the current high school with one elevator, and what I'll call the A building, as we still refer to it that way. Could you talk a little bit about the differences that we're going to see in terms of accessibility with a new building?
Well, first, by law, the whole building has to be accessible. But the reality is, in this building, you have two entrances. Each tower has its own elevators, but there's not an awful lot of level changes. So, you can get everywhere once you're on any level. Right now, in the current building, you kind of have to go back to the third floor to get wherever you want to go, and there's only one elevator anyway. So, it really should be a very accessible building, and not only inside, but outside. So, someone can accessibly go around either side of the building on sidewalks and on grade. So, it should work. That's the plan.
Great. And just a comment on, one of the things that I'm really excited about in looking at the plans is both the access from the bikeway, but also the access from what is now the low auditorium, to be able to get from the front of the building to the back, because those of us who've gone to the high school for years, if you're at the auditorium, the only way to get back is to either cut through the building or go all the way around. So, that appears to be well thought out, and I'm excited about this project. Thank you.
Thank you. I don't think I have many questions. Like Mr. DeCoursey, Steve, went through reconstruction renovation at the high school, 1980. I remember Mr. Reese was the principal, Mr. Devine was the superintendent, and I remember we were passing by the low, and this is leading up to my question, by the low auditorium in the basement, and I saw all the construction workers with head-to-toe clean suits. And I said, "What's, you know, why do you wear those?" And they said, "Well, you're passing through asbestos," which back in 1980, we weren't as cognizant as we were. And I remember going to Mr. Reese and other administrators, and I was a straight A student who did extra credit, because I wanted that extra plug in what I was doing, and they told me not to worry about it. And it was one of my first organizing efforts here in the town of Arlington, organizing impromptu, after sixth period, walkout at Arlington High School, and we had another day off and passing routes were changed. So, that brings me to the question, and I'm not sure who can answer it. I'm assuming, because we're in a different day and age, thank goodness, now, I hear that there's a project manager. If you could, myself as a parent or grandparent, perhaps in the future, what steps will you take? I'm assuming you're going to look at every piece of construction, having been on a couple of construction sites myself, every piece, when's going to happen, where? What would, will be the meeting, the protocol in terms of looking at a piece, seeing what potential risk factors, whether it's avoiding passing through a certain area, whether it's construction equipment and egress, you know, like, will you discuss a time? That sort of thing, so that we say, "Okay, this is our constituency," I shouldn't say, "these are our students going through." I think I got my question across, right?
Yeah, I guess I, I'd start by just saying, when we, we really don't have details to answer that question yet. When we bring the Construction Manager on and they start to work with the architect and our owner's project manager, they'll start to develop those details. But absent those details, my understanding is that we will phase this such that students will never be in a building that's under construction. They'll either be in an existing building that's not being touched yet, or in one of the new buildings once it's constructed. There may be some passing in between buildings that are under construction or passing nearby construction sites, but I think we will keep them, keep students separate, separate, or not in an occupied, we won't have an occupied building under construction.
Mr. Hurd, Tony Hurd?
Thank you, Madam Chair. If I could just add to it, one of the pieces that I don't want folks to forget about is the entire site is already under Massachusetts Department of Environmental Protection's series of requirements in terms of not just testing, but how we manage things. And so, one of the things that the cost of the project would reflect is the requirement to have a licensed site professional involved in the project from start to finish. And the main purpose of that, my licensed site professional, is to make sure that any contamination in the site is properly managed, not during construction and afterwards. So, that, for example, whenever we want to do something on an Arlington field, if we're going to dig into the ground, we need to make sure that we comply with the existing order of conditions, as well as employ a licensed site professional to monitor and manage that work. And just again, for folks who don't know, we're talking about, you know, Massachusetts, so the good news is, is that our environmental standards are extremely exacting today, and the DEP holds us all to a very high standard.
Yeah, the only thing I would add is that during the design development stage, as Adam said, there'll be very clear, there'll be a very clear plan for where students are going to be during the construction. And then, over the course of the project, there's constant conversations between the superintendent, the principal, and the construction management team.
Okay. Now, I guess I'm definitely reassured by that. I'm just putting a plug in since we're in the beginning stages and having worked on construction sites, that it's, as it will be, a head-to-toe review, not only saying this is who's going to pass when, but ensuring that that's the only way they can pass, you know, that's, you know, and that's something the project manager or something, somebody else will. And my other big concern is, and I think the contamination is probably the least of my worries in terms of, as Tony Hurd defined, is having worked on construction sites, when you manage the large equipment vehicles, trucks and the like, coming in. I'll leave it to the professionals to determine that. I anticipate and imagine we're going to minimize as much as possible any activity, major activity of large vehicles and the like, as well as squaring off while the students are there, or maybe not, maybe, but the sites I've been on, you usually try to get everything in before. So, I just wanted, since I had you here, I mean, it is a concern. That's like one of the number-one things that, you know, Suffolk and Blazing Grant and all them, they factor in for, unfortunately, something.
Every parent has asked the same question.
Okay.
Every grandparent, probably too, but every parent for sure.
Grandparent, well, I'm still a parent, but I'm definitely, then, I'm not sure who to address this question, and then I just have one more. Just my fanaticism around equipment and maintenance. It may be too soon in the process to really get the particulars on it, but as we're bringing in all this new equipment, clean and energy, sustainability, we have a facilities manager, director. Are we at the point, or is it in the future, to make sure that as all that equipment's coming in, being placed, being identified, warranties attached, maintenance, maintenance plan suggested, that that's going through some clearinghouse and is going to go the right place and be, you know what I'm saying, Mr. Chaplin?
Absolutely. So, our facilities director, Steve Nestorak, serves on that Sustainability MEP Subcommittee with Ryan, so he's tuned in to all of the equipment that's being purchased, what decisions are being made, how we're going to operate it. But I think more specifically, our OPM is advising that we create a new position within facilities during the design process, so that we can have them onboard as the building's being designed. It will be called a plant manager. Winchester did that. They brought somebody in who used to run a pharmaceutical plant, expert in building management systems, expert in all the HVAC. So, myself and the superintendent need to talk about that and budget that for the upcoming, either the upcoming fiscal year or perhaps fiscal year '21. But I think the general idea is to have someone who really has operated what will be a very high-tech building as compared to most of our other facilities, have them onboard for design, and then have them remain to be able to actually operate the building, and train the custodial staff and other facility staff to know how to operate such a building.
Good on that?
All right, thank you very much.
Oh, no, no, and then my last two comments were, and I know this is still fluid, but I've heard it from a lot of people, staff visiting professionals and high school seniors and their parents. I know the parking is still something that we're all struggling with, especially where it's a new high school. I'm not sure if anyone can comment on that right now. My ideal, which I'm not going to have, would be appropriate parking for staff and ancillary professionals, and perhaps something for the high school seniors. But I know we're limited by the size of the site, the contamination, where we really can't do anything and disturb it underground, but I've heard that a lot. Is my kid going to be able to park there? Senior, senior.
No, but there's, so we're going to have the same number of parking spaces that we have now, and there are parking spaces reserved for staff.
I'll just say that that scares me, because we're increasing the staff by so much, and we still don't even have it.
Well, what's important to...
All right, then, once, I'll get Mr. Chaplin and then Principal Jenga.
So, Jeff's absolutely right that we're replicating spot for spot, I believe, 227 parking spaces, but we're moving, I think, somewhere between 35 and 40 employees over to DPW. So, we'll be freeing up a lot of space there, which will be helpful. Doesn't answer the student question, but should balance the staff question. The other longer-term thing we're looking at that cannot be part of this project based on MSBA regulations, but we could look at when this project is complete, is you saw, actually, can you go back to the site? So, on the site, to the, I think it's the slide just before this one.
The board right here.
So, if you see, if you see all the way to the east, that parking, that's closest to Millbrook Lane, we have had some initial dialogues with High Rock Church about the potential and the future of constructing elevated parking deck over that site to be able to more significantly expand parking. High Rock has an interest, using it on the weekends for their services. We would obviously have an interest using it during the week for high schools, so that's not an immediate solve to what you're describing, but they are very interested, we're interested, so we are going to see whether or not there's a partnership that could work there to further enhance parking.
Okay. I just have the concern, because I just do dummy things down for me, and if I look at what we have, what I'll call the 22 basic functions with associated staff, the way I look at it, it's going up to 40. So, that's where I had parking concerns, but it's ongoing fluid, and we're discussing it.
Yeah, but so, there's a net gain, just to clarify, so the net gain of 35, or how many, how many?
Well, so, we have the same number, is that what Chaplin said?
We have basically the same number of sites for faculty and staff, but we have 35 fewer folks because of the town functions that are moving out of the building. So, net for staff, we really should be in the ballpark of being okay. And to be perfectly honest, the idea of having them be actual painted spaces that are numbered, and we can identify as opposed to what they are now, which is sort of a jumble of corners, I think will make a huge difference in terms of people being able to know it's their own site. For students, however, we don't really have the facilities. We push on the concept that this is a walkable town, and that we have good public transportation, but we're not likely to have that unless High Rock or someone else comes through. But while we're on the parking issue, the other question that I get asked a lot of time is for evening events, where that's often a really huge issue. So, one of the big pluses of the current building, of this building, of this plan, is that all that parking in the back will be useful for getting to the theater in the front, because you can come in through the back and walk through the commons, as opposed to now where there's parking in the back, but it's a mile walk around the building. And hopefully, some of the other overflow parking potentially in the DPW would be accessible in the evenings.
Can I just ask you my last quick question? Someone who did cross-country track and field.
Yep.
And to this day, they still run in the basement to train, and the biggest fear was a pen or pencil that you would slip on, or the locker hitting you in the head, and I had a pencil fall one time. I now see that there's proposed indoor track around the athletic facility. My question would be, as other people have asked me this, what uses at the new Arlington High School? Like, I envisioned if we could possibly do this, barring any safety concerns, that perhaps there could be a program at a certain time that seniors could also use the indoor track, or is that still on, or is the track just going to be dedicated for student use?
Well, we expect this, I mean, one of the philosophical statements was for the building to be a community hub, not just as a hub for students, but as a hub for the whole community. So, we envision, right now, the building is filled with community ed people in the evening, you know, 4:30 Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday. I can't find a parking space if I come back to find something. And so, I would expect the building will be filled. And outside the times when athletics are using it, I think people using that track for jogging and other indoor purposes is absolutely something, as long as community ed can figure out how to program it. I'm sure they'll figure out how to do that.
Yeah, because a lot of people who are seniors say, you know, "What can I do with the high school?" And they all said, you know, "I'd love to have a place, you know, we can walk the track outside." So, I put it before the great minds and I'm like...
Yeah, no, I think it's a twelfth of a mile, I think, around the outside, on the rubberized track, and I think it would be great if people were there.
Well, thank you for taking my questions. Oh, sorry, Mr. DeCoursey?
Yeah, and your questions on parking, actually, I brought this to my head. Some of the things I was asked over the past month and at earlier meetings is, what is the possibility for activating Grove Street as a potential egress from the site after school? And I'm not sure it would be in the morning because of the way the flow is going, but is that still a possibility as you study traffic flow issues?
So, the answer is yes. We're designing the DPW facility to maintain Grove Street access. It's required some machinations on the DPW side, and it's actually why there's an article in the special town meeting warrant, to contemplate taking the one single family home on the corner of Grove Street and the DPW station, DPW yards, so that we can have better turning radius for their vehicles. But that was a long way of saying, right now, we're holding it open for further planning slash need when the high school's...
All right. Because I think that's a worthwhile exercise, because I think you're going to find that you're going to, you may need that. Very short question, and it's short because, as I look at the baseball field, I'm just wondering what the distance is to right center field, because it still looks shallow to me as I look out there.
It's regulation, and the Building Committee has worked hard to give the spyponders home field advantage.
Okay.
Thank you. On behalf of the Select Board, I do want to thank the Arlington High School Building Committee for the many, many hours you've put in giving birth to this project, as well as going out to all the different forums and social media time you have to dedicate to that, to get information out that way. And plus, going forward, I don't know if anyone in the audience had any comments. If you don't, that's okay. Just name an address for the record, please.
Leonard Diggins, Town Meeting Member, Precinct 3. And I have a couple of questions. One, potentially to Adam. You had mentioned that you...
You ask me, and then I'll let you know.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
That's okay, I'm very procedural.
I should know that, I should know that, I'm sorry. So, Adam had mentioned the possibility of finding cost reductions, and I'm curious as to how that would, how, who would get the money if there were a cost reduction? Would it first go to MSBA, or would it go to the town?
God bless.
And the second question is, the operating, the operating budget for the school. So, I imagine that the energy cost may be lower, but if it's going to be a more advanced school, will the operating budget for the school be more or less? So, thank you.
Okay. Mr. Chaplin, you definitely can take the first, let me know about the second.
So, the short answer would be, any cost savings would be shared by the same percentage that we're receiving money from the MSBA. So, if an eligible cost comes down, they'll save their share, we'll save our share. It can get a little more complicated depending on what the cost actually is, but generally speaking, we would share it with the MSBA, just as we share the reimbursement.
In the same split, 49 point something, or?
Yeah, I mean, it would, I guess that, rough sketch, yes.
Rough, not to commit, but I know. And then, the second question about operating costs, anybody want to tackle that?
So, from a utility point of view, one of the next things we're going to do in design development is do a lifecycle cost analysis of all of the energy systems that Ryan talked about, and that's going to help us decide what type of final decisions we should make about geothermal or ground source heat pumps, and solar PV, and all-electric building decisions. So, that, when we do that, we'll know a better sense of what sort of the hard operating costs are. In terms of the staffing of the building, I would defer more to Dr. Jenga or Dr. Bodie, but given our enrollment increase, I would imagine from an FTE, from a headcount point of view, operating costs will go up, because we have more students to educate, and it's going to be a larger building.
Yes. No, that, I think that's, that's the answer I was going to give, that there will be increased operating costs, but that's because we have more classrooms, more children, thus more staff. But we're going to need, we'd have the same operating costs in the current high school with the increase in enrollment, as we will in the new high school, so.
Yeah, thanks. I'm all for the project, but I figure I have a better chance of getting my questions answered here than at Town Meeting, so thank you very much.
Okay. With that, I have a motion by Mr. Dunn, seconded by Mr. Hurd, to support and approve the Arlington High School project as proposed by the Arlington High School Building Committee. Any further questions from my colleagues? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I'll oppose unanimous vote. Thank you so much for coming in.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good first vote.
Yeah.
I'll just give them a second to, actually, I can move on this with, we're now at consent agenda? agenda, reapportment, LGBTQIA Rainbow Commission, Mel, Mel Goldsyp, sorry, Mel, requests special one-day all-alcohol license on May 4th at the Robbins Library Reading Room for a private event, request one-day all-alcohol license May 18th, 2019, Fidelity House for annual fundraiser, Frank Tessitore, friends of Fidelity House, and we also have appointment of new election workers, PJ Gardner, Karen Meehan, Joseph Murphy, Alex Wilson. First, I'll take a motion.
Move for approval.
Move by Mr. Kerr, Mr. Hurd, seconded by-
Second.
-Mr. Kerr. If anyone is here, and I see Mel, who I just butchered her name, please come up to the microphone, place it directly in front of your mouth, and introduce yourself for the record, please.
So I'm, I'm Mel Goldsyp, I'm a town meeting member from Precinct 20, and I'm the chair of the Rainbow Commission here in town. So, thank you. I think you just already approved me.
Yes, we did, but you're here.
We didn't vote.
Oh, we have voted, yeah, but it's, you're on the table.
All right. So I'm just gonna, very, very briefly, just since I have, I'm somewhere broadcast, just let people know what we've done, 'cause we just finished our first year. So, our first year was really successful, I think. Our activities included the town's first Pride picnic, which attracted about 150 people, way beyond our expectations. We had a table at Town Day, a couple of craft afternoons, and celebratory cake when the November election upheld statewide transgender equality protections. We've had fruitful partnerships with the public schools, the Council on Aging, the Robbins Library, the Police Department, the Envision Arlington Diversity Task Group, the Human Rights Commission, Lex Pride, the Cambridge LGBTQ+ Commission, and Massachusetts Transgender Political Coalition. We were so glad that Revera Leah Lyman Waldron from Park Ave Congregational reached out to us about the event yesterday to reclaim Magnolia Park after the hate graffiti incident. It allowed us to show up in solidarity and make new connections in the Muslim community. So that was, it was just really nice that they knew we existed and reached out and said, you know, "Please come participate in this event," and we were happy to be there. And it was a really great event. There were kids playing everywhere who were not paying attention to the event itself, which is what should be happening in that park. It was really just lovely to see, and lots of people who didn't know each other were meeting each other and making connections, and it was just a really great response to a bad thing that happened. It was, you know, a bad thing that happened, and I was really glad to see how Arlington responded. Likewise, the Human Rights Commission asked us to specifically invite the LGBTQIA+ community to submit stories for the Double Take event that was earlier this year, and the Arlington Center for the Arts has invited us to participate in Porch Fest. So we're looking into hosting a stage specifically for LGBTQIA+ musicians, either this year or next. We're at the, we'll know by the end of the month whether that's happening this year or next. I do have a special announcement, but I can't make it here today. I have to wait until after tomorrow, so look for something about Pride as a special commentary in The Advocate in the next few weeks. We hope the board will issue a Pride proclamation again this year. This June is the 50th anniversary of the Stonewall Riots, and those are the events that the Worldwide Pride Celebrations commemorate each year. So it's a big, big year for Pride. If anyone in the community wants to help us plan Pride, they can join us at our regular monthly meeting, which is this Thursday, April 11th, at 6:30 at the Robbins Library in the fourth floor conference room. And then there's a separate Pride Subcommittee meeting on the 25th at 7:30 PM at the Arlington Center, or at the Senior Center in the Arts and Crafts Room on the second floor. In the coming year, we plan to finish our strategic planning, which has been going on for a full year now, and we're gonna work to strengthen existing community ties and build new ones with groups we haven't had the chance to work with yet. There's so many great groups out there doing such great work, and, you know, I, I hope we can all get plugged in together better than we have in the past. So we're reaching out to others and inviting them into our work, and we hope that they will continue to reach out and contact us and invite us into their work as well. So I do hope that you will reappoint me, because last month I was elected chair. You might be in trouble otherwise. Julia Forsyth is our new vice chair, and people can reach us via email at rainbow@arlington, no, got it wrong, rainbow@town.arlington MA.us. And for details about upcoming events like the Drag Prom, which is at the Senior Center on April 27th, they can see our webpage at rainbowarlington.org, and it also has links to our Facebook and Twitter accounts. And the big thing is that we're looking for two additional commissioners. So, if you are interested in serving on the Rainbow Commission, you have to be at least 18 years old, and you have to be, you have to live in Arlington. So you can apply now, find details on our website or the town website, and I think that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mel.
Any questions, Solmy?
No, I think you covered it all.
I tried to be really succinct.
Thank you so much. I think you are the only one here from-
I think I have one, just one question.
Oh, yes, Mr. Kerr.
I saw, I saw in our, I, I saw in our additional information that gets sent out to us from the office that the new survey is in from Human Rights Campaign, so I assume you're gonna help us with that.
Oh, I haven't seen that yet.
You're gonna help us with that again, right?
Yes, I'd be happy to help with that.
Great, thank you.
I don't, I don't think it'll change much this year, I don't, we've, we've been doing strategic, strategic planning more than big initiatives, but I'm guessing the score will be about the same, so.
Great.
We'll get it up again next year.
Thanks for all the work.
Thanks, Mel. On a motion by Mr. Hurd, seconded by Mr. Kerr, any further comments, questions for my colleagues? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, unanimous vote. Agenda item seven, for approval, a common victual license, Abbott's Frozen Custard, 311 Broadway. I have Jason Denon Court, and if that's not your name, if you could give me the correct name for the record.
Hi, I'm, I'm Jason Denon Court, so owner of Abbott's Frozen Custard in Lexington, and also now in Arlington, so.
You wanna just do a little plug, you know, where you are, when you're open, what the hours are, and what your fare is?
Okay, sure.
Which is pretty self-evident, but.
Yeah, so we are opening at 311 Broadway, couple doors down from where Cappiano and Starbucks is, and, you know, hours will be, we're gonna figure that out as soon as we move in, but hours should generally be about noon time till probably 9:00 or 10:00 o'clock at night. We, I mean, I opened a store in Lexington last year on Patriots' Day, so we've been open, we're located at the corner of Merriam Street and Mass Ave, we're the closest commercial spot to the Battle Green, and we're across from the public library, next to the visitor center there. I'm a Lex, I'm a resident of Lexington, three kids in the school there. And, yeah, so this is about five miles door-to-door, same street. We will have a fair amount of high school employees from Arlington, and we'll also have some managerial staff going between the two stores, so.
That's great. Is there a motion?
Move for approval subject to all conditions, a second, fourth?
Seconded by Mr. Dunn. Any further questions or comments from my colleagues? Mr. Kerr?
Yes, thank you, thank you for choosing Arlington. I wanna tell you, my wife actually asked me not to approve this, and the reason she asked me not to approve this is that she has managed to find excuses to visit your store in Lexington sometimes more than once in a week. My children are thrilled, I'm thrilled, so very happy that you're, you're gonna be joining our, our community here.
Good.
You have a great product.
And I'm sorry, I'm just getting a message from our colleague Kevin in heaven, looking for samples, but.
Looking for samples, yeah.
Mr. Hurd, sorry.
One comment, just, I walk by this storefront every day, my office is right there, so I'm very excited, I've been waiting to see this come on our agenda, and I hope he's just open in time before my hydro machine comes in, and I have to then go, then is when I'm gonna start my diet, so. Until then, I'm all yours.
All right, very good. Everybody else is very confused.
Okay, on a motion by-
Well, it's a reason to Google hydro.
Thank you very much, Mr. Hurd.
Motion by Mr. Kerr, seconded by Mr. Dunn. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, unanimous vote. Good luck.
Okay.
Can't wait to see you.
Thank you.
Agenda item eight, we have for approval from our Transportation Advisory Committee, recommendations on two different areas, and I'll let you determine which ones we do first.
Excuse me, we'll do Hayes Street first. I'm Howard Muse, I'm the chairman of the Transportation Advisory Committee. The first item has to do with Hayes Street, which is located or runs between Mystic Valley Parkway and Medford Street. If you look at the second page in the memo that we sent you, you can see on the air photo how it runs between those two roadways. And the recommendation from us is to apply or install stop signs on both approaches of Mystic Lake Drive and Maynard Street to Hayes Street. This item was brought to us by a petition from residents of the area, who, and it requested that we put stop signs on Hayes Street. So, we had to, we did a study of, we did some counts, the number of tra, volume of traffic going through there. We also did some speed observations, and we looked at traffic crashes. We only found three recorded crashes over recent time period, and all three, or three that involved confusion over the right of way. And basically, the issue is the intersections are uncontrolled, so that people can become confused about who has the right of way. Now, the rule is the same as at a stop sign, that is, the driver on the left yields to the driver on the right, but I think because there's no stop sign on any of the approaches, people get confused. The neighbors also said that anecdotally, there were a number of near misses and other crashes that probably weren't reported, because there was no serious damage, or might not have met the criteria for being reported. Based on our observations, we felt that Hayes Street is of the, for the two intersections, we think that Hayes Street is the major street, and that it covers, carries, excuse me, more traffic than either Maynard Street or Mystic Lake Drive. And because they're, but, in, and in reality, they're all minor streets, so the Manual on Uniform Traffic Control Devices, which is the document adopted by the federal government to assure that traffic control devices, both signs and pavement markings and signals, are consistent throughout the United States. It's, it says that you should put the stop signs on the minor approaches. We do not meet warrants for stop signs on the basis of traffic volume or on the basis of crashes, but there is one other, one other way that it can be met, and that is if the right of way is not clear to drivers. And I, we believe that that's the situation here. In addition, as you're approaching Hayes Street from the side streets, because of the location of buildings, and in some cases walls, it's not always very easy to see approaching vehicles coming on Hayes Street. So based on that, we felt that that met the requirements of the MUTCD, and therefore we were recommending that you authorize installation of stop signs on both the approaches of both streets to Hayes Street. I also wanna point out that in the course of our review, the neighbors came to two of our meetings, a large number of neighbors came, I would say 15 to 20, to two of our meetings. Based on this initial request, and then other concerns that they raised, two other concerns being that the volume of traffic cutting through. Traffic uses Hayes Street to avoid the backup on Mystic Valley Parkway approaching the Rotary at Medford Street. This actually happens in both the morning and the evening, and some people are turning off of Mystic Valley Parkway and cutting through Medford, either to turn right on Medford, or even turn left on Medford and approach the Rotary for Medford Street, which is, has less of a queue than you find on Mystic Valley Parkway. And the other concern was the speed on Hayes Street as people are traveling through the area. The area is strictly residential, and so people are very concerned about how fast cars may be traveling through there. The entire length of the street is about 600 feet, and because of the other two intersections, there's really only about 200 feet between intersections. The speeds we looked at did not show, in our opinion, a speeding problem. The 85th percentile speed in the peak period was about 23 miles an hour, which is actually below the default speed limit of 25 miles an hour. The 85th percentile speed is normally used two-set speed limits. It's an attempt to reach a speed limit that most people would be comfortable driving at, but not putting it too high and not trying to accommodate everybody. We also looked at the volume of traffic through there. There were only about 100, I believe 106 cars in the peak direction in the morning and the evening, and although in a residential neighborhood that might seem high, that is not unusual for other residential streets throughout the town. So based on that information, we made no recommendation regarding any further steps regarding either speeding or cut-through traffic.
Thank you. Is there a motion first?
Move authorization of stop signs on both approaches of Mystic Lake Drive and Maynard Street.
Is there a second?
Second.
Sure, if you, you have a, do you have a question, or?
Question.
Well, first, let me just see, any of my colleagues have any questions, or? No? Okay, sure.
I'm Joanne Preston, I live at 52, 42 Mystic Lake Drive, exactly one house away from the intersection. I lived there for 13 years, so I know that road very well. My, but what I wanna ask you tonight is, 60 people signed a petition to have something done about Hayes Street. The problem with Hayes Street, and I'll be brief.
I was gonna say, 'cause we're, we're doing something, are you not in favor of what we're doing?
No, no, and they're not either. The 60 people who signed the petition do not think this is a solution.
Okay, if you wanna-
So we'd like, we'd like a chance, we didn't know that it was coming up tonight. We would like to have this tabled and be able to come back and talk with you.
Well, what, I, I think procedurally, what we should do is, we have this before us tonight, it sounds like you also wanna start that process, which would be to submit the petition with the 60 signatures, what it is you're requesting, the board will get it, and then we'll follow the same process that we did here. To say, we want something else, or this is, this doesn't fit our solution, this is what was requested, this is what we looked at, this is what the meetings were, so I'm, I'm inclined to vote what's before us, but then have-
We don't, we don't want that sign, we don't need that stop sign there.
Okay, that's fine, so why don't you get those, copy of the 60s, or so petitioners, what it is, Mr. Chapdeline?
So I believe it was, it was actually these petitioners that prompted this entire analysis by TAC.
Oh.
So I, I think we, we have a challenge here, as, as we've seen in past transportation matters, where TAC has done an analysis based on the MUTCD standards, it doesn't conform specifically to what the neighbors were looking for, and I, and I don't wanna speak for Ms. Preston, but I think that's, that's what we're seeing here.
Yeah, could I also say that, after I, I went to these meetings, we were told that the meeting to vote on it would be in February, and it was in the December minutes that the meeting would be in February, but one of the women who was initiating the petition was meeting in January with someone in the morning, and he said, "I'll see you at the meeting tonight, and we're gonna vote on it." That was January 7th. No one had any idea that they were gonna vote on it, we were all thinking, and I'd done a lot of research about how Cambridge handles, it's basically cut, it's cut through driving because of something I never knew about called ways.
Okay.
People are driving along, they have their, and it says there's too much traffic at the traffic circle, so they quickly make a right and go through our neighborhood. And I would say one of the greater problems is distracted driving, because they're looking at their phone, 'cause they wanna know their next turn. We have 14 children who live within one block of Hayes Street, some of them live directly on Hayes Street, and we have these people, I went and observed it, people are driving like this, waiting, they're trying to get home, it's commuter traffic. And the resident, Steve, who lives children in this area, goes out and he parks his car on Hayes Street. on Hayes Street, because his kids play in the front yard. And we have all these people just coming through.
Oh, no, I, unfortunately, WAYS is a solution, another way, another day, 'cause we've heard it throughout East Arlington, the center, and the Heights.
But Cambridge has some really good solutions, and we like, we think we could talk with them, and go over them, but the two stop signs won't do it. Children don't read stop signs.
I know, but what we do is, somebody started the process, including your neighbors, we referred it to TAC, they studied it, they've come out with this recommendation, and unless I hear differently, we have a motion to approve this part of the recommendation. But it sounds like you have a petition and some other names, as well as a different request. We really can't serve, by approving or denying this request, the WAYS and distracted-
I ask you-
I'm, I'm talking right now, I'm sorry. 'Cause I'm, I'm really giving you leeway on the agenda, because this is-
I thought people could come and talk when something is up.
Yes, and you have. So, I'm just trying to explain, I'm very procedural in terms of, you know, what the open meeting law says, and what's before us is a recommendation from TAC, I have a vote on that, and it's been seconded, I'm gonna take that vote, and I'm just saying, you know, start the process of what it is, that didn't happen, it'll come to the select board, and we'll determine, you know, may not go to TAC, it may go somewhere else.
I can't speak against the stop signs.
I think you just did. You just said you don't want them, they're not what we asked for, so, but I don't-
It's a use of expense.
But I don't go back and forth, I, honestly, okay. So, unless I hear differently on this, any of my colleagues have anything?
I do have a question.
Mr. Dunn?
I would like to ask Ms. Preston what the change is that she did want that the, that TAC didn't implement.
Well, first of all, we've, we've discovered new things since we went to the December meeting. So, it's not that we've had this full discussion with them, and they might like it. One of them is Cambridge does, these are commuters, there's a certain time of day they come with their WAYS. Cambridge just puts up a little sign in a residential street, they have it off of Kirkland Street. They said, "No turn seven to nine," I've forgotten what it was. And that solves most of the problems. Or four to six, I've forgotten the exact thing, but you can take that turn the rest of the day. That gets rid of a lot of these WAYS, people who are coming through, looking at their phones, and trying to drive through our neighborhood. There's a lot of children in that neighborhood, and they don't read stop signs, so the stop signs don't help.
Okay.
Okay. So, my experience, so we've, we've implemented no turns during commuting hours on a few streets, and specifically trying to manage around Lake Street. And our experience is, is that what the, it's very much a toothpaste thing, where when you squeeze in one part of the tube, it leaks out in another direction. Unfortunately, signs like that are rarely the solution. So, I, I want to understand the nature of what it was you're after, but now that I understand a little bit more about what you're looking for, I'm really happy to support the TAC proposal, because I know that they really look at these things with a lot of, a lot of good information.
That we have other solutions to-
Okay, thank you.
Could I just add that we did-
Shoot the microphone, sorry.
We did look at, and it was raised, the possibility of turn restrictions. Unfortunately, Mystic Valley Parkway is a DCR road, and Arlington can't put those turn restrictions on it. One other possibility would be to, I think you could, I'm not sure, maybe post a "Do Not Enter." But again, based on the speeds and the volumes of traffic, we didn't, didn't see that that was something that we would recommend.
Okay, thank you. Okay, on a motion by Mr. Kiro, seconded by Mr. Dunn, any further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, unanimous vote. Now, we go to the second proposal. Mr. Muse?
The second, excuse me, the second item has to do with a request from a resident of Thorndike Street near Magnolia Park. He lives on the section of Thorndike Street that is north of Herbert Road, and runs to a dead end near Thorndike Field. And there is traffic that apparently uses that street to drop people off who are going to the T station. And his concern was that there is an entrance to the park on Thorndike Street, that often it is parked, there are cars parked there, and then as people are coming out of the park, a car going down the street may not be aware that they're there. So, there's a potential for a problem as people are crossing the street. Therefore, we recommend that parking be restricted around the entrance of the park to 20 feet on either side of the park entrance, so that approaching cars are not, their view of people coming out of the park isn't restricted by parked cars. Also, as the suggestion was made, that the Department of Public Works install playground warning signs on the approaches to the park on Thorndike Street, which doesn't require the board to take action, the DPW can do that.
But thanks for letting us know. So, we don't say, "Why aren't there signs?" But, is there a motion? Mr. Kiro, seconded by Mr. Hurd. Any questions, discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, unanimous vote.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, and thank you to TAC for all that hard work.
Thank you.
Next, we go to Agenda Item Nine. I almost flipped the page too soon. Arlington Commission for the Arts and Cultural Annual Report.
Hi, I'm Adrienne Arch, and I am co-chair with Stephanie Marlin Curial of the Arlington Commission for Arts and Culture. And I'm also chair of Arlington Public Art, which is now part of the commission. So, thank you all again for your support for all these years. And I'm here to just kind of do a little update of, well, not an update, but rendition of our annual report. It's been a very significant year, where we've now incorporated, we are now the umbrella organization for arts and culture in Arlington. So, I'm really happy to say that we have, under our umbrella, Arlington Public Art, and Arlington Cultural Council, and the Cultural District Managing Partnership, as well as other committees that are tasked with doing our business as we move forward. We also completed a wonderful website, artsarlington.org, which serves as being the calendar of all the events of arts and culture that are taking place in town, and there are many, many, so I urge everybody to go. I did have some slides that I wanted to put up, but I don't see them happening. I don't really need to, but it'd be helpful.
We weren't aware of them, I'm sorry.
We have them in a packet.
Oh, okay. I, I thought I just would give it, that's all right. So, then I'll just use this for my cheat sheet here. So, briefly, just wanted to say that the commission makeup now has expanded to thirteen people, and it includes Linda Schumaker, who is the director of the Arlington Center for the Arts. We're so congratulating them on their brand-new space in the arts campus at the Central School. So, she also will represent the nonprofit arts organizations in town. Also, Beth Locke, director of the Arlington Chamber of Commerce, and I'm really pleased to say that this year, we've got businesses who are commissioning some of the transformer boxes that we're going to do this summer. So, that was the first time that that's happened, and we're really grateful for that. The Cultural District Partnership, led by Andrea Nicolai, who's also the director of the libraries, you all know, who's the chair of that. They're going great guns, and they just received a $5,000 award from Massachusetts Cultural Council, a grant to help them continue doing what they're doing. And Stuart Ikeda, who is a Hardy School parent and communications director at the Emerson Umbrella, he is the representative of the Arlington School Board, Honor Commission. And Lydia Kenigsher, who is a local visual artist, and she is the chair of ArtLinks Arlington, which is a new organization created as a support system, and as a networking group for artists of all stripes, visual, performing, literary, et cetera, who live or work in Arlington. So, and along with myself and Stephanie Marlin Curial as co-chairs, other of our great volunteers, commissioners, Kristen Canterbury-Bagnall, who works with Yo-Yo Ma, Tom Davison, who works, I believe, at WGBH, Janet Obertos, great, great marketing and communications experience. Behind her, Annalee Struggles, who's now the marketing director at the Arlington Center for the Arts. And Stephen Polczyski, who is a big proponent of the arts, our local real estate person, and, and he is now our treasurer. So, it's, it's really a commission full of very exceptional people, so. And Ally Carter, who is our Town Department of Planning liaison, who's really been helpful getting us off the ground, and helping us with all of our internal issues. So, anyway, just to reiterate the new website, artsarlington.org. Please go there, see all the local news, we cover news stories having to do with arts and culture. And again, we, we would advise, or we hope that we enthusiastically support anybody in the arts and culture realm in Arlington and beyond Arlington that want to list their events happening in Arlington on our website. It's free, go through Arts Boston on our website, it's very easy to do that. And we've really got more and more every, every month, so it feels like people are really participating. And just to say that the first three months of our website, which was started, was unveiled in, on Town Day of twenty eighteen, and between September and December, we had 1,203 users, 78% of whom were from Arlington. So, I don't know exactly what those numbers are, but I feel like it's a good start, and since then, of course, it's been another six months, and, and every day, we're getting more and more people going to the website, so, do that. And then just to say that Programs and Festivals Committee is currently working on implementing Arlington's Busker program, which is musicians who play in public. I know that Joe Kuro has been a big proponent of that, as well as strengthening existing festivals. And the Marketing Committee is working on branding and publicity for the Commission for Arts and Culture, visibility for our website, and social media. The Fundraising Committee is working on how to raise money to offset funds that we're getting from the town currently. And of course, Public Art, we've been in front of you quite a number of times telling you about what we're doing. So, the goal is for 2019, to explore and implement fundraising strategies, we know that we need to do that, assess the needs of the town, culture, cultural and historic properties and nonprofits, work with Department of Planning to implement our cultural plan, activate the cultural district, or continue to help activate the cultural district, work on wayfinding or signage, and developing an outreach plan through partnerships with civic organizations to ensure equitable and inclusive opportunities for artists and audiences. So, that brings you up to date, I hope.
Oh, my goodness. I feel like I just did all that. First, procedurally, I'll entertain a motion from one of my colleagues to move receipt-
So moved.
-by Mr. Kiro, seconded by-
Second.
Mr. De Corsi. Any questions, comments from any of my colleagues? Mr. Kiro?
Thank you very much. Thank you, Adrienne, and the thank you to the, the commission for all of your work. I know that this was, you know, a very large change organizationally, but it seems that it's really is taking root very quickly, and, and making the arts and culture efforts a lot stronger. You know, I'm a big fan, I like to attend a lot of, one of the events that you hold. My, my kids appreciated the opportunity to use the typewriters, for example.
Ah, yeah.
But you have pictured in here, because it's not, that's totally foreign territory to them. I've been explaining to them what it is, but-
Ancient technology.
Yeah, exactly, exactly. Couple of things that are jumping out to me here is I, I really appreciate the partnerships, the fundraising and grants that you've been able to pull in from really a diverse number of sources, is just really quite impressive. And I, I know a big chunk of that was the Bar Foundation with the-
Well, that's the, yeah, the public art, right.
Yeah, yeah, but that really made that project very special. And, you know, there are things that don't flow through the commission, but we know that, like, the Arlington Global Service Station kind of-
Right.
-partnered with, with you all, and they were recognized by the Chamber of Commerce last, last month. And so, those types of partnerships and spurring activity by others really are-
Exactly, it's very exciting to see that. Yeah, we had no idea that the Arlington Service Station painted his, his wonderful-
Yeah.
-building, and kind of very attractively helped to fill in that space in between east and the center, yeah.
And, you know, lastly, I guess what I say is that I'm really happy that the website is up, up and running. I know we've, we've talked for so many years about a central calendar. I, I'm really happy that it's being run through Arts Boston, too, though, because we're able to have the Arlington portal and our branding-
Yes.
-but we're able to get the word out about what's going on in our town to such a larger audience. And that, that, to me, is just, you know, very important, too. We, we like to cheerlead for the town and, and share what we have here, so, thank you for all of those efforts.
You're very welcome. Thank you all for your support all these years, too.
Thank you, and I can't tell you how much, I will tell you how much the Select Board is impressed by not only the breadth of experience and expertise that you have on the Core Committee, but then you have the seven action committees that kind of fall under that. So, you're extremely organized, you certainly will be accountable for, you know, funds you have received and will receive in the future. But even more exciting is with all those, with the Core and seven action committees, I know, and we can see you're out there seeking as many grants as possible, and I think we have a greater chance of success because of the professional infrastructure you've set out, and really, really impressed, so thank you, and to everyone else on the Core Committee. Mr. De Corsi?
Thank you, ma'am. Adrienne, I just wanted to thank you for all your work, for my days on the Finance Committee.
I know.
And you went through some tough years there, and I appreciate you working with the stakeholders, and, and really to see what this has, has become is, is great, because I know there were some nights you probably walked out of community safety saying, "When are they gonna give me something?" What do I gotta do? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. De Corsi. If not, on a motion by Mr. Kiro, seconded by Mr. De Corsi, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, unanimous vote. And once again, Agenda Item 10, with Adrienne, is for approval, cheerful where you sit at Uncle Sam Plaza, you can say the rest. June 8th.
Oh, yes.
Sorry.
So, Arlington Public Art, it's, it's been our, this is, this will be our seventh year of the main, or one of the main, community-based fundraising events that we have for public art, cheerful where you sit. And we want to do it again this year. Our intention is to try to combine it with another populous event, and we were very excited about the Beer Garden last year, we were also very excited about Porch Fest, and the idea that they'll both win that one weekend happening at the same time, felt, made, made us feel that we would really like to be part of that effort, and we think that more people would see us if that was true. So, we would like to request having cheerful at Uncle Sam Plaza on that same day, if that would be okay.
So, so moved.
With approval by Mr. Kiro, seconded by-
Second.
-Mr. Dunn. Any questions, comments from my colleagues?
My idea, my head is full of terrible ideas, like, you can, you can put the chairs, like, sometimes people say that the Beer Garden doesn't have enough seating, so you can put the chairs in the Beer Garden, which involves a whole bunch of work, so I'm not sure it is. But then, all the people who are waiting in line to get into the Beer Garden, they need somewhere to sit, so you can, you know, charge by the minute in the, in the line. Like I said, I'm full of terrible ideas, but I think this is great.
Duly noted. Mrs. Kropelka reflect that? No, okay. Okay, on a motion, move approval by Mr. Kiro, seconded by Mr. Dunn. Any further questions? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, unanimous vote.
Thank you so much.
Thanks for waiting for us. Next, I will turn to our vice chair, Mr. Dunn, discussion of vote override and debt exclusion?
Sure. So, as we heard from, we got the full presentation, of course, just now from the, for the high school, and they are waiting, the school, the meeting is on Wednesday, when we're gonna get the final numbers from the state. And that's the, and at that moment, I think we have 90 days to approve it? Is that, we have 120 days, but why don't, wait, why not just do it right away? So, because we don't want to, for instance, be voting in the middle of July, in the- So, because we don't want to, for instance, be voting in the middle of July and the middle of August, when everybody's out of town. So on, we'll be back here for a meeting a week from Wednesday, and we're going to put two questions, I'm going to ask everybody to put two questions on the ballot. And I'd also particularly, and the reason I'd put tonight, this on the agenda for tonight, even in anticipation of the 17th, is I didn't know who was going to be sitting in that chair. And it was important, I thought, that we had a discussion among the five of us with the new people about the commitments. And I'd also note that based on the feedback that we got at the last one, Joe, do you, it's the, do you want to cover that real quick?
Yeah, just real quick. There's a new draft of the override commitments here. The only change on the sheet is on 3B, because there was some discussion at our last meeting, feeling that that was still a little bit fuzzy, and that we should call out exactly what we're talking about here. So this includes the phrase "after pedestrian infrastructure," says "including sidewalk brick removal and repair." And at the end, after senior transportation, we added in the phrase "such investments to be guided by the town's sustainable mobility planning efforts," which I think the manager referenced at our last discussion, that there is a proposal before town meeting to fund a sustainable mobility plan for the town. Those are the only changes that I've put in there, but I'm hoping that they adequately address what the, what my colleagues raised.
Yes, and I know there was an area of concern by Ms. Rowe also.
Yeah.
And I'm going to anticipate it's been addressed, and if not, I'm sure she'll let one of us know. I'm sorry, Mr. Dunn.
No, well, I guess one, just in brief, so I don't think I'm looking for a vote tonight, just looking for a discussion, discussion, and if there are improvements to be made, and we'll see you in nine days.
Well, the only other, from the previous meeting, I know Ms. Rowe had concerns about really clarifying and making less murky complete streets. And then I had raised the issue around special education, and Mr. Carter was here, and I haven't heard anything back, but I'm going to take it in stride that between the town manager and both my colleagues, that that concern certainly has been relayed and somehow has been addressed. I thought that was kind of a, not even murky, but wasn't even addressed, and I was just looking for something. It can't be, because it's in there, it is in there in terms of number one, but I just want, talking about, oh, no, not number one, where's education? Oh, C.
Yeah, number 1D.
It's in there, 1C, but since I'm not, I pass it on, and I'm just going to have faith in the system that those that are still involved in the meetings, Mr. Dunn, Mr. Carroll, as well as the town manager, to whatever ends you can, I sense some approval or recognition.
Yeah. And I actually, so I didn't try to include it here, because I agree that it's in the school, but I actually think that what you were arguing for is actually best fit under 3A, where it's talking about improving instruction and closing the achievement gap, those are some of the, so maybe, maybe what you're saying is actually even in both. And I did, and I meant that as a positive thing, like, what you were, your point was represented not just in a percentage, but it's also represented in the need for improvement.
Okay.
Yeah. And I think it would be reflected in the details of the five-year plan that the schools are working on. If I'm not mistaken, I think that they have a hearing on Wednesday at Gibbs on this as well. I think we all contacted, like, some folks about that, so, yeah.
I'm not going to get emotional like I did last time. I apologize. I think I went to that well, too soon. But anyways, any further discussion? Mr. De Corsi, how are we doing on this? We got Finance Committee, Municipal Law Attorney, and now our colleague.
And new board member, yeah. Yeah, so as you know, I've been following the discussion while I was running, and I received the update here, and I think the addition here of some more detail seemed to address Ms. Rowe's concern. And by brick removal and repair, we're talking, probably starting in the center with that, and I think that was something that needed to be clear. As far as the other commitments are concerned, they're consistent with what we had seen, what I had seen previously, and I'm comfortable with them.
Okay. So we don't need a vote tonight? So do you need a vote, or Mr. Hurd?
I don't, I just, sorry. I thought I'd seen Mr. Hurd's hand up, and then I didn't.
I was just going to say, is one of the two squeaky wheels on the, on the bricks in the center, yeah, it's good to see it in there, because I think it helps when we present these commitments to people that aren't affected by the school increases and the, and the high school. That's one of the things that people talk about. And in Arlington Center, we talk about not just the mobility, but the business district and empty storefronts, which has improved, but I've always been a big proponent of revitalizing the business districts, and I think making it mobile will invite, because it's certainly difficult on the elderly population that uses the center, but it's difficult on the 35-year-old former college athlete that uses those sidewalks as well. So I'm glad to see that in there, so.
And I think in perfect, you know, in the interest of perfect transparency, I think we heard and we voted on some parking benefit district appropriations, that we'll start that work, but this will help ensure that we can finish that work in the centers.
Thank you, Mr. Dunn, and we'll look forward to having that, I think you said, on our next agenda, or on the 17th?
Yes.
Which is a Wednesday.
Yeah.
Okay, with that, we'll move on to the all-important discussion of future Select Board meetings. I think we're all set for April. Are we starting up in May?
Do you want to do that now, or do you want to save that for the end?
We'll do that at the end. Good idea. Should I remember that? Agenda Item 13, vote approval of the town manager's evaluation, Mr. Dunn?
So as everyone here, I'm sure, remembers, we have an, the town manager, we do an annual review, and the annual review starts with a self-evaluation from the manager that's sent back to each of us, and then each of us writes our individual review. And just to be clear on the process, those individual reviews are returned to Karen Malloy or head of personnel, and then she compiles them into this summary document. And the reason we do it that way is so that the individual reviews of the manager can be kept out of the public record, but the summary document is in the public record. Adam, we were talking earlier, you said, like, this is, like, when have you ever addressed the board from that, from my microphone? And I'm like, when you interviewed.
That's right. That's right. You're right.
That was my answer for that. And I, and, so the review, so the compiled review itself is before us. It has both numerical and comments. And of course, as always, the town manager scores remarkably well on a scale of 1 to 5, where 5 is exceptional. His personal characteristics are 4.71, his professionalism was an average of 4.8, public relations average 4.58, support relate, board support and relations average 4.55, community leadership 4.8, organizational leadership 4.44, financial management 4.9, planning and organization 4.9, with an overall of 4.73, which I think overall is a very strong review. So I think we should probably solicit, or any comments from the manager, and take a vote.
Mr. Chapdolane?
I'll just say, thank you for, once again, going through this process. I think it's very helpful to me, certainly, to receive positive feedback. I'm human, like anybody likes to receive positive feedback, but receiving critical feedback's helpful as well, so I can continue to see where I need to focus or improve, and gives me good guidance for what the board's looking for. So thank you for your commitment to it, and thank you for the review.
First, is there a motion to approve?
A move approval of the performance review as written.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Dunn. I heard both seconded by Mr. Hurd.
Give it to Mr. Hurd.
Any discussion?
I'm going to abstain from this vote since I was in here during the year, so I just want to, it's not going to be a no, it's an abstain.
And through Mr. Dunn and or Mr. Chapdolane, please thank Ms. Malloy for really working and coordinating this with us, making sure that she did an excellent job, I think, in compiling and integrating five very different, diverse Select Board members' comments, and I, you know, I can see all my comments encapsulated, perhaps in somebody else's words, or her very excellent summary, as well as, we now have to adhere to new rules in terms of how we post the document, so I know her job isn't done yet. But once again, for me, she's always made this process extremely pleasant and not too heavy lifting, except for her saying, Diane, you're the second to the last or last one. But I don't want to minimize all the work that she and obviously her staff have done. And Mr. Chapdolane knows, I've had conversations with him, I said, you know, I feel if I give you 5555 and everything, I think it would kind of dull everything. And in most instances, I probably could give you 55. My overall was 4.65. I took all 39 individual scorings that you could do and divided, and I'm one of those, I have to do 3.75, 5.25, it's just how I am, so. But overall, we all feel, you know, you're the perfect five, but I agree with you that it's nice to, maybe not so much, I wouldn't say criticism, but just areas where myself individually, I feel like there's something more I needed, and, you know, what did I not do that you needed to hear? So it's reciprocal. So with that long diatribe on a motion, unless I hear any further questions on a motion by Mr. Dunn, seconded by Mr. Hurd, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Any abstentions?
Abstention here.
401. Okay, now go to, draft votes for Select Board report to town meeting.
Now the meeting starts.
Yes. Okay, I guess what I'll do is go through each article, and someone, if you have any comments, any edits, any additions, just raise your hand, and I guess we'll just take them as they come along, and if there's nothing, and everything's fine, we'll just keep on going. Attorney Heim, I'm sorry.
Madam Chair, if I may, I just want to explain to the public and the millions and millions watching, that we proceeded a slightly different way this year in the effort to have the cleanest Select Board report possible. So there are a number of articles that are listed that are having their first final vote and comment, but we've also put all of the rest of the Select Board report before you, so we can get feedback. I just want to note that I really appreciated all the feedback Select Board members had, things that were minor typos or issues of addiction that I've already taken note of. I also want to note that, as was the case last year, we have a newly elected member, the timing of this is odd, so that these votes reflect the votes of the five members who were present at the time of the hearing, and it's not the board's custom to automatically revisit them, but to provide an opportunity, say, town meeting or something like that, for Mr. De Corsi to voice any, you know, difference of opinion he might have had with the board's votes on any of these articles. So with that, thank you very much, Ms. Malloy. I just wanted to lay the groundwork.
And I would just say, also procedurally, besides tonight, traditionally, what's been done in the past since I got on the board in 1999, because, you know, the board that had the Warren Article hearings, sometimes it was the same in April, sometimes it wasn't, what myself and others have also done in the past is, and you don't have to do it or not do it, indicate to the chair that, particularly the ones that you might have voted a different way, that, you know, usually the chair gets up and says, you know, this is what the board voted, and then, and then at that point, you know, you could get up and, you know, speak to whatever it is you want, but traditionally, we keep the votes and who voted as the hearing occurred. But Mr. De Corsi?
Yeah, no, and I respect, I just wanted to say that where I was not here for the hearings and the board voted the way it did, I just want to make sure that that's clear, and I want to respect that process, but also have the opportunity, and it will be a town meeting, for those articles where, just to let town meeting know where I would have voted, or where it would have come out, whether it's the same or different than the board, so I appreciate that opportunity.
Definitely. Mr. Carroll?
Yes, thank you. Before we get into the meat of the articles, too, I mean, this is just really a stylistic thing. I don't know how it is traditionally handled with the listing of the membership of the board here, but right now, I notice we're only listing four members on the back cover here.
Oh, okay.
And I know that Ms. Rowe had participated in all of these votes, so.
So I just left that to the board. Last year, you didn't opt, I think the office didn't put any names on it?
This year, we have four names, but we, he was going to talk to you tonight whether we should put Carissa's name, because she actually went through the whole
Yes, yes.
All right, so we just have to add Carissa's name to it, if that's okay with you, because she was here for the January
Well, I think that's appropriate, eliminates any confusion that if you see a fact and I think whatever the vote was, it's clear that I wasn't the member that was voting, so.
Thank you. Okay, let's see. If I don't hear anything, I'll keep going. Any comments on Article 27?
Madam Chair?
You're going to cast comments on everyone?
I'm sorry. I just want to note that, actually, Mr. De Corsi, while he's not voting on these matters, did note something that he thought would be helpful for the board and can be cleaned up fairly easily.
Oh, good.
I just wanted to note, he noted that in the fines for violations, because we're altering this bylaw dramatically, we don't need to have a fine for a billboard or outdoor advertising anymore, so if the board's okay with it, I would just take your vote to let me clean that up, and I'll make sure to do that in the final Select Board report.
Look at that. Good catch, Mr. De Corsi.
There you go.
Just trying to help.
Okay, we'll move on to Article 28. Article 20, I'll pause. Article 29? Article 31?
Wait, sorry.
So, if I may, I just want to note for the board that the article, and for the public, the articles in blue were things that had minor tweaks made to them after the board initially voted on them. So, for example, the Zero Waste Advisory Committee wanted to tweak its goals a little bit from the initial vote that the board had approved. Similarly, the folks from the, who brought forth the regulation of polystyrene under Article 29, they wanted to tweak the comment because they noted that they weren't quite confident in the cost estimate piece of it, so that's why that text is highlighted there.
On 30, you're going to come back and do that in the next, what's your, when do you want to cover 30?
Oh, I shouldn't have said 30. My eyes jumped down. That will be on the next, sorry. If I said 30, I misspoke.
No, you didn't, and so I'm just double checking.
Oh, 30 is on the, on final votes and comments?
Got it, okay. Thank you.
Ah, okay, okay.
So last call on Article 31. Article 32? Article...
I don't have a question.
Well, this is just our vote, final votes and comments, to see if we have any typos. We've already had the hearing, and this is for us to catch if there's any "our" bads in here.
Yeah.
Is there something briefly you wanted to say?
No, I just, I don't even remember this text, but I'm just going to assume it's correct.
Oh.
Thank you, okay.
Sorry about that. Okay, I think I said 32, going once, going twice, okay. Article 33, demolition. 34, outdoor lighting. 35, short-term rentals. And if I'm going too fast, somebody tell me, slow down. 36.
Yes.
Mr. Dunn, on 36.
I just want to be, so in the change here, we've got three residents to be appointed by the town moderator, one of whom is a green card holding resident, one of whom has been a resident for less than five years, and one of whom is a high school student. In the event the moderator cannot fill the aforementioned listed positions after diligent efforts, moderator shall appoint residents with qualifications set by committee at its organizational meeting. So yours, do I read that as, it should organize with those seats vacant and then seek people?
That's correct, Mr. Dunn. As I was reviewing this in advance of tonight, I realized that these are very specific criteria. I think they're wonderful criteria, but, for example, it may not be easy for the town moderator to identify someone who's a green hard card holding resident, or maybe, or someone who's been here for less than five years, or a high school student within the time period that we have, given the town meeting usually comes towards the end of the high school year. So at the organizational meeting, there should be plenty of folks for a quorum, and if they want to change any of these criteria, they can, but given the timeline that you have, you wanted a report by the beginning of September, I thought it was important to just make sure that if there was some issue, that the committee could have that flexibility.
What do you think about, just for discussion, the moderator, in the event that the moderator cannot fill the four listed positions after diligent efforts, the moderator shall appoint residents that he thinks are, you know, that he thinks are best for the committee. I basically, I'm trying to short, like, exactly as you say, because we're in a short timeframe, I don't want, like, John Leoni to have to, like, wait for the first meeting, get, like, and then have that committee struggle, like, to define who it then have that committee struggle like to define who it wants as its new members. Like that's a rabbit hole that they could disappear down for weeks. And so I'd just rather have John use his best judgment to appoint people.
Madam Chair, may I? Mr. Dunn, if you'd be, if you'd find it acceptable, I could, we could shorten it to the moderator shall appoint residents with qualifications consistent with this article.
I'm fine with that.
That sound good?
Yep.
Everyone's okay with that?
Yeah. I just want to know, one of the changes that I forwarded to town council is to correct the names, the two bullets above that. It's actually Republican Town Committee and Democratic Town Committee, the proper names of those bodies.
Okay. Article thirty-seven, police chief from civil service. Article forty-one, redevelopment board. Forty-two, legislation town treasurer. Forty-four, legislation CPA. Oops, I have to move and check mine. Sorry. One second. Forty-five, grabbing vocal voting rights.
Madam Chair, may I note one thing?
Attorney Heim, sorry.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I did want to note that there is one important distinction between this vote, and I want to make sure the select board is okay with it from what you passed previously. In the first iteration, I put it to a town ballot question. I realized that somewhat silly in the sense that the legislature is unlikely to take positive action on the article. And it's, seems like it's putting something out for a ballot question that's unlikely to ever get in front of the voters. So if the board is comfortable with this change, that it would just take effect on its passage, I wanted to raise that issue to the board. So I can easily switch it back to.
Comments?
It's good.
It seems reasonable.
Good changeable with it.
Okay, thank you for working that out. Article forty-seven, pay access. Article fifty, short-term rental. Article fifty-three, benefit district. And Article seventy-eight, Indigenous Peoples' Day. So I guess with that, and the changes highlighted by my colleagues as well as Attorney Heim, I'll take a motion to move approval by?
Second.
Mr. Carroll, seconded by Mr. Dunn. Are we all set with that? Ms. Kropelka?
Yes.
Attorney Heim?
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay. Hearing no further discussion. All those in favor on a motion by Mr. Carroll, seconded by Mr. Dunn, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Any abstentions?
Aye.
Four oh and one. Now we move to final votes and comments. Sorry, I got to close this. I'm always envious of Mr. Dunn, how he seems to jump in and out of these so quickly, and I can't do it. So, final votes and comments. Article twenty-six, billboards and signs. Article thirty, this was tabled. Mr. Chaplaine?
If the board would consider this, I'd actually like to ask the board to change its positive vote to a vote of no action since the board's vote. I know Mr. Hurd's been working with town council, and I have sat along with Mr. Radamaka with some members of the real estate community. And through those discussions, I think we've realized that there's more work to do to work out the mechanics of this particular article. And I think we'd rather take the year and be able to come back and get it right next year at town meeting. So if the board is willing to change its vote to no action, I would appreciate that.
Do I hear a motion of no action on Article thirty?
So moved.
Mr. Carroll, seconded by Mr. Hurd. Mr. Hurd?
Just quickly, I'm glad that we're doing this. We've gone through this, you know, I know there's a lot, there's a real need for this. And as we peeled it back, there were more questions than answers. So I think there's a way we can do this right, where we can get to a five oh vote on this board. And just two comments, I want to apologize to Doug for last meeting where I didn't read through all the work that he had done. I had mentioned in the meeting that some of our comments in the hearing weren't incorporated in the work, which they were. And also thank him. We sat down and, you know, had a little powwow. So he's done a lot of work on this. That is now going to go into no action. So I anticipate we'll have a few more sit downs in the future. But just I want to thank him for his work on this.
Okay. Any further discussion? I'll leave it to you, Mr. Decorsi, since I know you were watching the meetings and you're here tonight on the no action, if you want to stand or vote for it.
Well, I think, you know, which, kind of, for consistency purposes, I'm going to abstain and then I can deal with it.
The town meeting, okay. Vote of no action by Mr. Carroll, seconded by Mr. Hurd. Any further discussion? If not, all those and say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Any abstentions?
Aye.
Four oh and one. Which brings us to Article thirty-eight, senior tax deferment. Article thirty-nine, the D accession. I enjoyed that presentation.
Little word. I sent that one to my mother.
Article forty, library parking costs. Forty-three?
Madam Chair?
Mr. Chaplaine?
So I'd like to just describe a recommended change that I believe Attorney Heim sent to the board last week. So finally, between the board's last meeting and this meeting, myself and Sandy Poehler and Paul Tierney were able to connect with the assessor in Concord, who currently runs a program similar to this. And he gave us some very detailed and candid advice and pointed us to a state, a bill before the state legislature right now that would actually consider adopting a program like this or allowing for the adoption of a program like this statewide. And really, his two numbers, top two recommendations were, don't have your assessor's office have to do the calculation of whether or not someone qualifies for the circuit breaker. Have them just verify that they qualified for the circuit breaker and have that be the eligibility requirement. And rather than having it be a percentage of someone's income in terms of a tax bill reduction, he recommended setting, having the select board have the power to set an amount of a tax exemption. That way you can have certainty, or at least some projection of what the impact might be to spread across the remainder of the taxpayers. So what we've put before the board tonight is a recommendation that achieves that. And to give the board a sense, I put this on everybody's desk. I just want to describe what this, what this is here. So what we...
Thank you. Okay, fine. Sorry.
So what we were able to learn is that last year, there were nine hundred and sixty-eight residents of Arlington who qualified for the state circuit breaker. What we don't know and literally cannot find out is how many of them own properties. And if they do own properties, how many are at or below the median assessed value, which would be another criteria that's contained in the proposal before you. But for argument's sake, if every single one of those people qualified for the remainder of the program, and there was a one thousand dollar tax exemption, it would cost sixty-five dollars on all remaining residents' tax bill. And then you can go across the line, two thousand, three thousand, see what the impact is. If five hundred people were eligible and took up the offer of the program, you can then see the corresponding impacts here. And then if only two hundred and fifty people were eligible and took the town up on the offer, you can see the corresponding tax impacts there. So given, given what the impacts will be of the tax, both the debt exclusion and an override, if they were successful, I feel like this gives the board a range to think about whether or not it wants to be able to set an exemption rather than have it be a percentage, the percentage of their income capping their tax bill.
Mr. Carroll?
And my understanding is that mechanism would be an annual mechanism, so.
Correct. You could adjust.
After, after the tax, the tax rate is, is approved, then we.
Exactly right.
We could take that up.
I think it's a much cleaner approach, approach to this. But I was a little bit confused. I did read through the memo that was sent to us. And what I'm not clear on what's being proposed to us as an alternative, is it that we still file home rule legislation
that mirrors the legislation that's currently moving through the legislature? Because there was a comment there that said, oh, well, we could always just, just withdraw the legislation. But it seems we have to have some language to that effect, right? Because isn't town meeting's expectation going to be that if they pass off on this, we're going to submit the legislation, we're not going to be withdrawing it. So it seems like a small thing, but.
Madam Chair, may I? So, Mr. Carroll, we certainly could include a clause in the special act that would essentially say that this, you know, special act shall be, you know, withdrawn, or our petition will be withdrawn if the municipal option becomes available before the special act essentially matures. So basically, what's happening is that this legislation, that we don't know whether it'll pass or not pass, but it's going to be option legislation. So we'd have to go to town meeting and say, hey, do you want to adopt this municipal option? I guess what I'm saying, though, is that it would be, it's a little bit awkward to put in a special act itself, that this special, we're going to, this special act shall not pass if you, you know, adopt a municipal option. What would be much more efficient and likely is just to request that Representative Garbely or Senator Freeman basically ask the bill be, you know, withdrawn. And we would go to town meeting when we're adopting the municipal option and say, we want to withdraw this petition before the legislature and adopt this municipal option, because it's just faster. So I can certainly put something in there. That's, it's not a problem. I'm not sure that it would actually end up in the special act itself. But I can certainly put it in so the town meeting has greater clarity that the only reason that we would not end up getting this special act is if the municipal option became available first.
Okay. Yeah, I'm just, I'm just still a little, just fuzzy on what that mechanism would, would be. I mean, in reality, probably I'd have to assume that the legislature, if they saw a, a home rule petition coming through that was basically identical to something they were already considering, that they would probably just do, they themselves would do no action on it and roll it in. I just want to make sure we're clear and that if, you know, I could just see us being open to question if we went and asked for, with all the best intentions, ask for a home rule legislation to be withdrawn when town meeting had clearly voted to submit it, even though it makes complete sense.
Yeah. Well, the interesting part will be, too, to sort of have a multiple-way dialogue here, the act as Doug has drafted it, talks about a ballot question needing to improve it and/or revoke it. Whereas I believe the state legislation that we've seen is just local options, such that town meeting could adopt the program absent a ballot question.
Mm-hmm.
So there were, that's sort of one of the fundamental differences between the two.
Yeah.
So it does sound like the mechanism that counsel has mentioned, whereas if it was to be adopted before, before this was adopted and we had another opportunity at town meeting, you could actually ask town meeting to both rescind its approval and do the local option.
Okay, yeah, yeah, yeah. That makes sense. That makes a lot of sense. I'm, I'm on board with this, as long as we can export a selectment to select board on that first line.
Oh, goodness. My apologies.
Yeah, yeah. I think it's a lot cleaner. I think it's not, probably not, not only more predictable and easier for the assessors, but I think it's actually a lot easier to explain to, to people who are applying for it as well, so they understand what the benefit is that's at stake.
Yeah, yeah.
And it's true. Way it, weigh it that way. And I think this does not have, I, oh, no, it does have. Am I looking at the wrong thing? I'm looking at, at your drafter, the drafter court.
There's no sunset clause in the revised proposal, Mr. Carroll.
Okay, yeah. That, that one set off an alarm bell. I mean, for me, it was section eight. There was a sunset clause that said it would go away three years after implementation. That, it's no good. We're going into a four-year override. I'm going to have that go away three years and now.
Okay, so.
So I, okay, so I'm, I'm fine with that.
Article forty-six, mission on disabilities fund. Article fifty-one?
I'm sorry.
Sorry, sorry.
No, I need to go back to forty-three.
Forty-six.
Forty-three, sorry. So do we have to, for the report and so on, do we have to pick specific numbers we're going to use as references in the comment?
So, Madam Chair, may I?
Oh, yes.
Mr. Dunn, my recommendation would be maybe if it's okay with the town manager to incorporate this scenario. Because one of the great things about the model that was, so included in the comment, put together a scenario. But one of the great things about this model is that you'll be determining the amount of money that the exemption will be valued at, at a later point in time.
Yep.
So you don't have to put in one specific number, but you could give a scenario sheet that would give, you could give, we could plug this into your comment that basically says.
Mr. Chaplaine?
I mean, it's a bigger issue, but to compare it in years past to, say, fee setting or fine setting, I think the board could have a discussion before this comes up at town meeting to at least get a sense of the board where it might consider setting the exemption after further debate and deliberation, seeing what the actual final projections are for the debt exclusion, the override. And then maybe have the chair be able to share that when it's being debated.
Okay. So then that just takes me to the one, like, so then what is the, what exactly do you, how are we going to get our final vote draft on this, the comment draft on this, if we're going to include that chart?
So I have one in front of you.
Yep.
If you're okay with the vote and comment, I would just take your direction to include a scenario chart as part of that comment.
Well, could there be some sort of, perhaps, Mr. Chaplaine, a little footnote or something really abbreviating, but encapsulating your remarks about how you arrived at this. But this is, I don't want to say hypothetical, you know what I mean? So that they, see, this isn't the definitive numbers. I mean, I know you have the nine sixty-eight, five hundred, two fifty, but just some sort of explanation.
Talk about it as a projection.
It's like a guesstimate or something. Yeah, if you could just put that, so that if something else happens and somebody says, well, you said right here, and it's not that number, whether it's higher or lower, you know what I mean? Just basically say that this is an estimate approximation of whatever you think is appropriate.
What if, so what if counsel builds into the comment that, you know, here are a series of projections of potential impacts based on potential subscribership to the program, and the board expects to have a further discussion and report back to town meeting at what amount it would recommend setting, or something, something like that.
I'm okay with that, but just as a practical matter, we've got the seventeenth and then town, and then for, and then our next meeting is the twenty-second. Presumably, we're not going to get to that.
I was going to say, this is May.
So, but you sure you don't think town meeting is going to get to this till May? Like, if we're going to report to town meeting with a, with an additional vote, when are we actually going to have that discussion and vote?
We can do a will report. And then normally what we've done is, if we can't, go ahead. I may not be answering your question.
I just mean literally, what date will this board take that vote?
So I think we'd have to look at what meetings we set.
Yep.
But frankly, I would imagine zoning will take the twenty-second, the twenty-fourth.
Yep.
The high school will take the twenty-ninth, maybe, maybe even more into the following.
So that means we have to vote this, we have to take our next vote on like the twenty-second, then presumably. Are we going to be, that's okay?
I think once the board vote, if, if the board votes presumably on the seventeenth for a debt exclusion and override amount, that.
Then I'm, I'm happy. I just need to.
Yeah, no, that's, that's fair.
So you're saying we'll be ready on the seventeenth or the twenty-second for this?
Probably the twenty-second.
Okay. So we'll make sure.
Agenda on the seventeenth, sorry, a train wreck. Sorry.
That's all right. We'll plug through, right? We all have seen each other. So twenty-second for that. Okay, so, thank you. I'll say again, forty-six, fifty-one CDBG, fifty-two revolving funds?
Madam Chair?
Attorney Heim?
Just a quick administrative note on this. We included a date for the balance.
Beginning balance.
The beginning balance of the fund. Based on a little bit of feedback we received, I think we're just going to strike the date, if that's okay with the board.
Is that all right?
We haven't done that in the past. We included it this time, but it seems like it's causing more confusion than clarification.
Is that all right? Okay. And last one, Article seventy-nine. If nothing else, I'll take a motion to approve as well as excluding the vote we took on thirty, which we already took separately. Is there a motion to approve by?
So moved.
Mr. Dunn, seconded by?
Second.
Mr. Carroll. Any further discussion or Attorney Heim?
I just want to make sure that I understand the board's intent and the final product reflects what the board would like to see. So with the board's approval, what I would essentially be doing is caging these as five zero votes because they reflect the vote of Ms. Rowe. These are final votes and comments affirming that the comments and the substance is right. But the Warren Article hearing was a five zero vote. Ms. Rowe's name will be on the report, perhaps in the introduction. That's one of the places that we can make clear that we've got a new select board member that's come on since. But is that in some substance what the board would like?
Mr. Dunn?
Yes, but I think with the one exception that you're also going to have to put a caveat for thirty.
Yes.
Hmm.
Because I think that's the single vote that Mr. Decorsi's number will actually appear in.
Yes.
Got it.
Okay, with that. Okay, with that, on a motion by Mr. Dunn, seconded by Mr. Carroll, any further discussion or questions? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Any abstentions?
Aye.
That's a four zero one. We'll now return to agenda item twelve. So everyone can pull up their calendars. Calendars? Calendars? I believe we need to start in May, is that right? Mrs. Kropelka, yes. So as we said, our next meeting is Wednesday, the seventeenth, and then...
Should we do the twenty-second to at least have a twenty-second before town meeting?
Okay, so how's Monday, the twenty-second look? Good before town meeting, we're here anyways. That's good.
Yeah, what time do I have? What, seven?
Seven? Is seven okay? Do you think that would be enough time?
Yeah.
Okay. And then we'll go into May. I don't, I, my calendar feature doesn't say if anything's a holiday, a holy day, or anything else, but should we do thirteen twenty-seven? Twenty-seven, some more of it. Okay, that's what I'm saying, okay, so...
Six and twenty?
Six twenty, six and twenty? And if we're still in session at town meeting, stop those at seven, if not, we'll start at seven fifteen. Is that okay? I'll go into June. Does anyone have a, a date that is not good in June?
Sorry, I'm still...
Oh, sorry.
You know how earlier you were saying that there are parts of things that I can do faster? This is where paper wins.
Paper rules.
Thank you, I'm now looking at June.
Okay. Any preference or lack thereof? Ten twenty-four? Something different?
So that, if we do the tenth, that's the day before election and I think Ms. Kropel, Mrs. Kropelka may kill us.
Well, that's true.
I will.
Well, then it's either, it's gonna be a meeting that's closed, three twenty-four, seventeen twenty-four, or do we want to do a Wednesday? No, no, that's after the election.
We do three seventeen?
Yeah.
Okay, three seventeen? Is that all right? Same thing, which God help us if we're still at town meeting in June. Start at seven, otherwise seven fifteen. And now, summer schedule, which is casual, I'll leave it to my gentlemen colleagues.
I think we go casual on Memorial Day.
Oh, is that when we go? Oh, all right, you'll have to let Steve, Mr. DeCoursey, know about that. Is it anyone that has a preference for the July meeting? I'm guessing towards the, yes, okay.
Sorry, I'm still writing down my June.
Yeah, I'd say I'm best off the second half of the month.
Yeah, definitely the second half of the month. Is there anyone, fifteen twenty-two, twenty-one?
I'm away fourteenth to twentieth.
Okay. What about you, Mr. Dunn?
So I can't do the first or the fifteenth.
How's twenty-two look?
Twenty-two looks great to me.
Twenty-two, okay?
Looks good.
Yes.
I note that last July, I came back from New Hampshire to come to the meeting.
Yes, you did.
No, don't do that.
I do appreciate.
Don't do that.
And I think it's safe to say that's seven fifteen from now on.
Goal's setting in July also on a Saturday, if you...
No, we do that Thursday night.
Oh, that's fine.
That's separate, where Adam and I have been. Do we need to set that now, Adam?
I mean, we can, we could pick a Thursday night if the board is so inclined.
Okay, a Thursday night in July. What did we just pick for the select meeting? Twenty-second?
So the twenty-fifth.
How's twenty-five look?
How about July fourth?
If I can potty like a rock.
If you want fireworks. We can get that here.
If we do it the twenty-fifth, is that too much of all of us in the same week in July? Or is that okay?
It's okay.
Six o'clock, Mr. Chapdeline, is, when do we stop that?
I think we did six PM, six to eight last year, I believe.
Yeah. All right, if you review your notes, it has to be something, something different, we can change it, but let's ten, right now say six PM. And then August. How does nineteen twenty-six, anyone else?
We don't normally have July yet, Diane.
Didn't we just do July?
Yeah, we, yeah, that's all I, we don't have a calendar printed for it.
No more paper.
Oh, oh, I thought we had to go to the end of September, I'm sorry.
If we can, we should pick August.
Yes, yes, okay.
Okay, I cannot do the nineteenth.
How does twenty-six look for everybody?
I'm out of town on the twenty-sixth.
Yeah, twenty-six is tough for me.
Is that right before? How about five or twelve? How about twelve?
Twelve.
Twelve is fine.
Twelve is good? Seven fifteen?
August twelfth.
Correct, Monday, August twelfth, seven fifteen. And I guess we'll stop there. So then when we start the September one, if we can all make sure we have the holiday holy days, because I don't, unless all you, I know Mr. Chapdeline has it on his phone. Okay, so we don't need a vote for that, we're all set. Correspondence received, received. I believe there is just the one request for crosswalk and Grove Street. I'll take a motion from one of my colleagues to move receipt.
I'll, I'll move receipt, and I guess I'll move a referral to TAC, except that I know that we have already referred this...
We did.
To TAC in two thousand seventeen. I'm really, and I think that might have sprung from issues I brought forward.
You put it forward.
I brought it forward. I'm curious where that's at.
Also, it has to do with crossing with the school kids and the children.
Crossing down Grove Street, all the kids going through that entrance that Mr. DeCoursey wants to make even more accessible, so, yeah.
Joe, let me get out the file, but you did refer it a year ago.
I, I looked it up last night, it was in two thousand seventeen.
Okay.
So just procedurally, can I get a second?
Second.
Mr. DeCoursey, sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off. So what we're doing right now is maybe seeing what the select board office, maybe you can coordinate with the select board office in terms of what we should or shouldn't do with this?
Well, I'm wondering that we should refer it to TAC and just inquire as to the status of the previous request.
I'll have to research. I thought they did have a finding that there was no safe place to install one, but I, I'm not confident of that, I'll have to check that.
Okay, let's refer in whatever form that that hoes. Yeah. Any further question, comments? If not, on a motion by Mr. Carroll, seconded by Mr. DeCoursey, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Unanimous vote. New business, Mrs. Kropelka.
I have nothing right now.
Awesome. Attorney Hyim?
I just want to note my appreciation for folks who are submitting substitute motions with plenty of lead time. It's very much appreciated by my office and the town moderator.
Mr. Chapdeline?
I'll pass on new business tonight, thank you.
On this, I hear differently, I'd like to just keep it the way it goes, Mr. DeCoursey?
Just briefly, sorry, I, I just want to mention that last Friday, on the night before the election, as a, as a nervous candidate, I decided to go to the High School Musical, me and my girl. And I just want to commend the high school students in the Performing Arts Department for an outstanding show. Michael, Mr. Byrne at the, at the high school as the director, and there's just so, so much talent at the high school, it was really great. They had three performances over the weekend and, and it was wonderful. I actually recommend it to any candidate in the future, the night before election, it's a great way to enjoy yourself and be before the, the busyness starts the next day.
It's always the best thing to do. Any further new business?
Nothing for me.
Mr. Dunn?
Nope.
Um, Mr. Hurd?
Nope.
Mr. Carroll?
No, other than I can confirm, Mr. DeCoursey was there, because I saw her.
Okay, professionally speaking, I have a crap load. First, it's, it, the way I understand it, if it has to be an agenda item, that's fine, but regarding the CPA appointment and Ms. Rowe, I believe we stated our attentions in the beginning that she would be joining the board, taking a leave from there, and then she would return back to the CPA committees. So I don't think we need to have it an agenda item or post it in interviews, but I want to double-check that. If, if we can, I'd like to hear from my colleagues, if we can, Mr. Dunn?
I just think that we need Mr., I mean, the town manager to make the nomination and I think, and I certainly would be delighted to endorse it at our next meeting.
Okay, that's all. So we'll put that on the agenda. Secondly, I've spoken with the select board office, they're going to put out all the lists of select board committees, subcommittees, who's on them, as well as the one or two that we've recently added. If those who are on committees, whatever way you want to get back to the select board's office in terms of, I really still like this one, I want to keep it, I really still like this one, but I can pass, or this is a great committee, but if somebody else wants to, because we have to put, you have to bear some of that load, some of that burden, that's applicable to, you know, what you feel. And the same thing for you, I don't know if you want to do a rating of what would be, you know, or if, however you want to, you know, if you want to say definitely would want, I'll do it if you need me or whatever. So if we could just coordinate that over the next two weeks. Spoke to the town manager about this. Contrary to what we were told, those gosh darn Xs on the telephone poles that have been through major storms, windstorms, floods, I went out there with a scouring pad and some Dawn dishwashing liquid and elbow grease, they're not coming off. So I was wondering, did Verizon do that or National Grid?
Verizon contractor.
If there's some way, I assume we'd be through the town manager, can explore with them. I mean, if, you know, if I had my fifth child, and I only have three, went out and tagged all the telephone poles in town, I think we wouldn't let that. Even if they come out with as close as they can to a brown thing to go over that, I'd rather see a faded brown that doesn't match than all those whites. Because, and I really, and if there's no resolution, there's not, but we can also always contact Jackie Duffy, but I think right now it's best to have the town manager handle that. Last two things, I know the select board office as well as town manager and Attorney Hyam are getting everything, sort of a template for the cannabis hearings. We have the original deadline set by the previous chair, Mr. Dunn. I'd want to adhere to that unless somebody tells me differently, but I think we should, as well as if we could start the process running since there was a successful ballot vote on the all alcohol license that was approved in the heights, if we could, unless my colleagues, if we, it, it could be included as an email from either the select board's office or the town manager, Attorney Hyam, what the process was last time. You, you announced it on this date, thirty days later, fourteen, thirty days later, this is what you required, this is what was done, this is when you had the hearing. And then if my colleagues could look at that as well as anyone else, I think that's a pretty good system and maybe includes, you know, sort of the template we use for that. But, you know, as we move forward, things can be, you know, fine-tuned and adjusted.
Madam Chair, on, on the, the retail marijuana, I'm sorry, I had meant, intended to bring up new business. When I was at Youth Health and Safety Coalition the other day, the representative of the parent advisory council had spoken before us, was, was there, and just, she was asking me about this timeline also for the, the review, because you recall, we at, voted to add into the process that the working group, cannabis working group, would help vet some of the proposals and give recommendations. So the question was just around the timeline, making sure that whatever timeline we have incorporates just adequate review time for them, and I'm sure we're gonna want adequate review time as well for what comes through. So I just wanted, I had intended to raise that.
No, no, that's all right.